Happy Birthday, Michelle.
Yes, Happy Birthday.
Thank you. Look, are we gonna sing Happy Birthday? But that's for later. But it's there waiting for me later.
I'm gonna raise that toast we talked about.
We're just having some pie food.
You having a good day?
It's okay. I was traveling for, well, part of it, you know. It's been a long day. So, but anyway, it's okay.
Did you drive all the way up?
I got there like real early this morning so we could get to the airport, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
How was the plane? Did they leave the middle seats open or not?
No, it was packed.
Yeah.
I was traveling with Kate. We were together, so. We're an American. If it was JetBlue, it'd be a little different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chuck, what is your background today? Is that Cyrus McCormick?
On the nose. Well played. Figured I'd go up toward Raphine where some country music star was cited today. Who, I thought it was the YouTube guy.
Oh, yeah, I just. Are you talking about the kid that was at White's Truck Stop?
Yes.
Yeah. He's popular in some circles.
I haven't turned on the radio since I can remember. Just on a podcast kick now.
I've seen him on TV before, but I don't remember what program.
Second.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour of eight o'clock and like to welcome everyone to the August 6th edition of the Lexington City Council meeting. Thank you all for being here and thank you to folks tuning in on Facebook Live. And first, I would, after calling the meeting to order, I'd like to invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The Republic. Stands one nation under God. Indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you all very much. It's got some great entertainment. As we begin the meeting, I have two items, a point of personal privilege that I'm going to embrace. One is a bit of a prepared statement and the other, or well, first, like to embrace in the position of serving the city as an elected official. I've often thought about what the driving force is, and then I ran across a sentence that made sense to me, which is, "I'm guided by love and truth and a deep desire to strengthen this city." And so I know that my colleagues of council members and myself govern ourselves or have that sentence in our minds as we're working for the community. Want to address a few items that are circulating. First, meeting via Zoom. I want to be exceedingly clear that there is no intention to omit or prevent anyone from attending our meetings. We first began meeting via Zoom due to recommendations at the state and national levels due to the COVID crisis. Personally, when I contracted COVID, the absolute worst part was the burden that I might infect others, especially family with existing medical conditions. The city staff has approved various rallies and public events and worked diligently to accommodate folks while adhering to the ever-changing recommendations and best practices. But again, I want to assure you that we will continue meeting via Zoom for the benefit of council members as well as for the general public. As members of the public want to organize events, we'll work to accommodate them again with the requirements and requests of the governor's office in particular. Why not allow citizens of Lexington to vote on the name change? Lexington is organized, is a city organized with the city council as the governing body to set policy and procedure. The city charter provides the council with the authority to change the name of the cemetery and is one such authority. With all the decisions that city council makes, some people like the decisions and some do not. We only ask that you, at the end of the day, understand the decisions. Council members serve the public from the goodness of their hearts without expectation of rewards or compensation. They engage in the work of the city out of genuine concern for their neighbors, all their neighbors, and I believe especially for those that are or have been marginalized. There's intolerance of the name of the cemetery and intolerance of the name change. But none of, the intolerance does not help the cemetery nor our community. I invite everyone on Zoom, Facebook Live, or reading about this in The Advocate or News Gazette to embrace tolerance. Again, accept the decisions that are made and to work to build, to make our city, and join us in being guided by the love and truth of a deep desire to strengthen our city. The second item that, point of personal privilege I'd like to point out is a bit of a moment of silence. And that's for the, in recognition of our brothers and sisters across the Commonwealth and across the country who have been impacted by the hurricane. We sit on a beautiful summer night, cool temperatures this evening, meeting peacefully on Zoom and broadcasting on Facebook to as many people as possible. But I think it's only fair that we stop and think about those folks that don't have electricity and may be suffering due to the impact of a natural disaster of the hurricane. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you all. Next is consideration of the agenda. And city manager, if I think I was aware you wanted to remove 7.3, the July 2nd minutes from the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, there are some corrections we'd like to make before they're approved.
Thank you. We'll postpone consideration tonight and remove that from the agenda. Is there anything else council members wish to take up or address? Hearing none, we will accept the agenda with the modification of removal of the July 2nd minutes not being considered tonight. Next item is public hearing, increasing the courthouse security fee. Jim, did you want to introduce that or?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the city attorney is probably more capable of going through that issue with the city council.
Sure. The, thank you. This is Jared. The General Assembly, this most recent session passed an amendment to the ordinance allowing localities to increase the amount of court fees charged to folks convicted of felonies, misdemeanors, or traffic infractions to offset the costs of courthouse security. Previously, it has been $10 per conviction. The amendment allowed localities to charge up to $20 per conviction. The city shares this cost with the county, Rockbridge County. And with the joint services agreement with the county, the city is responsible for 25% of any costs of courthouse security that are not covered by these fees. So for the past fiscal year, that amount that was uncovered coming out of the city's general fund was approximately $80,000. So increasing, doubling this fee will substantially decrease that cost to the city. And of course, instead of coming out of the general fund paid by all taxpayers, will be paid directly by those convicted of a crime or a traffic infraction. So Rockbridge County has already increased their fee from $10 to $20, and this would just be Lexington doing the same.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Members of council.
Jared, I have a question. You said that the cost to the city last year was 80,000. Was that a significant increase as to what it was in previous years, or is that pretty much a steady cost?
That's the, the security costs are increasing year to year, but that general amount, you know, it's not a huge factor. It's, I've got going back for the past five years, figure the city share might have been 72, 73,000. So figure 10% every five years or so. But there's no question that there is consistently been a shortfall and the costs of courthouse security have been more than this fee is going to, or has recouped. And probably will in the future. It will just hopefully decrease. I'm looking at the, so the fee for last year brought in 120,000 compared to combined court security fees of 440,000. So even if, let's assume this doubling and caseload is the same, we bring in 240,000 through the fee, leaving a shortfall that needs to be made up through the general fund of $200,000, and the city share would be $50,000. So ultimately, through the cost share program, this would save the city $30,000 from the general fund.
Thank you, Jared. Any other questions from council before we open the public hearing?
Jared mentioned something about conviction and traffic citations. Sorry about that. So the, this fee, is that incurred by anyone that shows or is required to show for court or is just for, paid by those convicted? I wasn't clear on that.
Only paid by those actually convicted. If you're charged, show up and are found not guilty, you would not pay this fee.
Thank you.
There are no other questions from council. I would like to open the public hearing. And Bonnie, thank you for being with us tonight and serving as clerk in Janie's absence. We're grateful that you're here. Have you received any written correspondence or comments for the public hearing about the issue of courthouse security fees?
No. No comments on the security fees.
Thank you, ma'am. Really appreciate it. Not being aware of any, or not having received any comments, I would close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration.
Move to approve ordinance admitting Lexington City Code, increasing the security fee from $10 to $20.
Second. Thank you, David, for a second. Any discussion amongst council? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Ayers? Mr. Ayers, rather?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. In your packet were the minutes from June 4 and June 18. Were there any additions, deletions, corrections that you would like to offer?
I was absent from the June 4th meeting, so not really appropriate for me to vote on those.
Very good. If there are no changes to those, we'll let them stand approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is citizens' remarks. Although we typically ask for prior notification to be given to the city manager or myself by individuals wishing to address council, public comments are always welcome. And I will remind people, someone suggested earlier today that tonight's meeting was not open to the public. We are open to the public. The first and third Thursdays every month, we are here. If you go to the website, you can find our mailing address and telephone numbers, and we welcome your input individually or to council as a body. I ask that you sign up and be recognized during citizens' remarks, and during the agenda item, I ask that these guidelines be followed. To stand and state your name and address for the clerk for the record. Make your comments to the council as a whole. Be brief. State your position and provide facts. Provide written statements and/or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution. Debate is prohibited, and we ask that you speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. Since we're meeting virtually, the majority of our presenters are in emails that city council members will be reading shortly. But we do have at least one person that will be joining us. Dawn Johnson will be joining us in just a moment. The, remind everybody that these meetings of the city council are formal proceedings and are recorded on audio tape. I would also like to recognize that the minutes from our meeting and the comments are all part of the minutes. And we are also taking into consideration comments on Facebook. They are not read during the meeting, but they are put into the minutes for the record. And with that, I would like to invite Dawn Johnson to come and use her three minutes to speak to council.
Good evening, council. This is Dawn Johnson. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I reside at 411 North Randolph Street, Lexington, Virginia. And I wanted to make a comment regarding the name change or possible name change of Evergreen Cemetery. And just to start off, you know, I realize as everyone else is going through this thing of, you know, changing anything Confederate or anything that has to do with racism or whatever, whatever. But I was really, when I read the paper, I was really startled. I was insulted, really, that Evergreen would even be considered a name change. And that was brought to the meeting to Mr. Leslie, I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce your last name. And I just wanted to know why, because Evergreen is known by black and white to be predominantly black cemetery. I don't know how many people, black or white, have been buried there. But why was it necessary to even include Evergreen? My mother was 84 years old when she passed away. She lived in Lexington all her life. And Evergreen Cemetery, they chose the name. The name was chosen because it was meant everlasting and ever-loving to the black people here in town. There's nothing derogatory about that, and nobody would know that unless the people, you were there when the name came about. So I ask, you know, why are we lumping together cemeteries? And we have another cemetery located in Lexington area that you all never mentioned, Barkbridge Memorial Gardens. I mean, are you all trying to make a uniform, uniformed cemetery department? Or not department, but, you know, in essence, what is it that you all are trying to establish here? Because Evergreen was not the focus. It was not the task at hand. It was the renaming Stonewall Jackson and because of its history.
You muted, Frank.
Excuse me?
I was trying to speak, Dawn. I had my mute button on, so zoom error. Thank you, Chuck. Dawn, thank you for joining us and sharing those comments. I will address your questions as best I can in hopes of drawing some clarity. Rockbridge Memorial Gardens is outside of the city limits and not purview of the city of Lexington, but that's a reason that's not being considered.
Okay.
In the discussion, there was a great deal of concern that more focus and resources have been focused on Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery and less on Evergreen. And in trying to create a more perfect union of our city, I would suggest council's intentions were to have the names perhaps share or complement one another in some capacity. And the modification or change that was discussed in our work session was adding, for instance, Evergreen at Lexington so that it may have some parity with a new name that will be the Stonewall, formerly the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. So I hope that answers your questions. As I mentioned, or well, I'll stop there.
Okay.
Does that work?
I understand what you're saying, as long as the name is not eliminated altogether.
Correct. And it's certainly within the purview of the city council to do that, but that's certainly not the intention that the council has been working towards. I feel very confident in sharing that with you.
Okay. All right, dude. Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. You've got a letter, I believe, in the list of things to be read later in the meeting as well. So we may, I think it addresses the same issue, so we may just skip that unless you object.
No, you can skip it. I said it.
Very good.
I said what I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you again for being with us. Again, we have quite a few folks that have written in, and I think everyone has the list. Marilyn has the first one, and we'll just proceed with the list as presented to Bonnie. Marilyn, wanna unmute and take it away?
First one is from Willard Sherkey. Leave the cemetery alone. Do not change the name. I repeat, leave it alone, period.
This message is from a James Beck. I am a descendant of a Civil War veteran. I am from Georgia. My relative fought for North Carolina and all the southern states and died for them in the war. Y'all need to leave our history alone. You people in these city councils and even the mayors of our towns are nothing more than citizens. And y'all think y'all have the right to change our street names and cemetery names without our consent or even asking how the majority feels in your districts. That is wrong, and you shouldn't be messing with history anyway. The fact, once y'all are done ass kissing and sucking up by changing all of these things, y'all give it a second thought, just like I didn't give them any thought beforehand. It's a narrative you all are following. Y'all don't care about these places and things. It's all for votes because you think it will help your next elections. When you're out of office. When you're out of office, we're going to get people who care about the South to change them back to their respected names and put monuments back up.
This is from Gary Ruley. Chuck and Frank and all council members, good morning. I don't understand all the urgency to change and remake the world according to city council. And furthermore, what's the reasoning behind all of this insanity? With the changes you make to the cemetery name makes no sense, and it won't change one thing, period. You folks know that. Why do you walk lockstep with all this nonsense? I have no clue. Other than to be led by your nose and kowtow down to a minority. You are totally disregardful of folks not wanting that to happen. I can't change your actions, but I can and will begin to change my banking to outside city and to follow suit groceries, gas, restaurants, investment firm, accounting, insurance, medical and pharmacies, gift shops, et cetera, and strive to not do any unnecessary business in town whatsoever. A pile of folks, I'm pretty sure, will follow suit. It may not make any difference, but it's just this, it's the best way to let you folks know I'm serious about all this nonsense and done trying to get you folks to use common sense. I don't expect a reply and see no reason for you to do so. I'm aware you presented my letter to council, but it was tossed. I'm done, but I'll be sure a copy of pile folks on this. Have a good day and say what you want, but the Lexington I knew has gone with the wind, just like me.
A letter from Diane L. Hoffman. To whom it may concern, I recently visited your beautiful historic town with a view toward retiring there from Michigan. A friend and I were given a two-hour tour of your lovely city by a local realtor, which we thoroughly enjoyed. You have so much to offer. Our last stop was the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery, where we immediately saw a news video camera in front of his monument. We both had a bad feeling that it may be because the government may be taking it down. My friend, the Honorable Stephen M. Timmers, did a brief interview and appeared on your local TV station, WSLS. I understand that you unanimously decided to rename the cemetery. I don't know the reasons for your decision, but cannot fathom why anyone would want to remove a tribute to a man who went to extreme ends for a cause he and so many others believed in and for which he was a loyal leader. It is my history too, whether we like it or not. If we are to learn from our past, we need to understand our nation's history. Will the next generations be better equipped to effectively lead our country into a new phase of history if we erase it?
From Joel Kenauer. The article I read from the New York Times said Lexington was rethinking its stance on the memorials and statues of Confederate people of significance during the war. You might as well join the rest of the folks that folded like a cheap suitcase when a little pressure came their way. How long have the memorials been there? A hundred and forty or fifty years and no one until now has folded. Says something about this generation of folks that never served their country to keep our freedom and never fought for anything. These statues are not racist. Memorials of loved ones and people to look up to were standing up for what they thought was right at the time. Brave people in the face of adversity, not cowards that run from the fight rather than stand their ground. Joel Kenauer, 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 sorry, Guttersville, Alabama.
The next item, I didn't realize when we were assembling this, is anonymous. And we do ask people to at least identify themselves. And so the next one won't be read into the minutes. And we'll skip to the next letter from Jimmy Boots Finfarra. Marilyn, if you can proceed.
Thank you. Why will you, the city of Lexington and state of Virginia, not stand up for the facts about Stonewall Jackson? And then that would solve the problem of renaming the cemetery because then you wouldn't need to. The fact that Stonewall Jackson opened up a school for the black community in eighteen fifty-five with his own money? I was like a church, it was like a church school, if you will. Stonewall and Lee were very devoted Christians. Stonewall read his Bible every day. So I'm going to stop here for now, but me and Liz would be honored to answer and the facts on the life of Stonewall based on written facts, which, which has not had to do with when this was his home, the great state of Virginia. Thank you, Jimmy Boots and Liz.
This message is from Gail Goth. I have just read a very disturbing article on Google News that the town of Lexington is rethinking its history of Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson since it is a liberal city. I spent many a happy tourist hour in your town and enjoyed every bit of it. Robert E. Lee was a fine Southern gentleman, and he did not own a single slave himself. He did not fight for slavery, and he was on record against slavery. He chose to not turn his back on his beloved Virginia. I find it disheartening that there might even be a thought of changing the name of Washington Lee University. Robert E. Lee is buried there, as are many of his family members. What are you going to do? Dig them all up? Jackson started the first school in the South for blacks. VMI is in your fair city. City, what a wonderful history. Are you going to turn your backs on that beautiful history due to progressive liberals that don't know their history? I understand that slavery was horrible and abhorrent, and it should never have happened. But the fact remains that it was legal at that point in time. For anyone to believe that war was fought over slavery is a gross oversimplification of the facts. Less than six percent of the Southern population owned slaves, and yet to this day, the descendants of the ninety-four percent that did not own slaves are still paying for it. This is unfair and inequitable at best and ludicrous at worst. Twenty-first century standards absolutely cannot be imposed on eighteenth and nineteenth century people. It cannot be done. Please, please learn your history and do not overshadow Lee and Jackson with political correctness and go about changing names and changing your history. History cannot be changed, whether it's ugly or not, and we must learn from it and move forward. Please feel free, free to share this with your city council and city government. If you proceed with political correctness, it will destroy the tourist trade in your town. And that is a lot of the income, I would imagine, for a city such as Lexington. Thank you, Gail Goth, San Angelo, Texas. P.S. I have always wanted to see Richmond and Monument Avenue. Now that's gone. Please don't make that same mistake in Lexington.
Sorry. Okay. This is from Jake McDonald. I'm a resident and voter in Lexington. I write into support and thank the city council for going through the renaming of local cemetery on Main Street. You all have made an important decision that helps begin a process of making Lexington a more welcoming community. I hope that you all continue to challenge the status quo of Confederate symbols in our town. Fixing potholes is certainly an easier task than this. But there's an honor in taking a stance that shows a commitment to inclusivity.
Dear members of the Lexington City Council, my name is Kelsey Vita. I am twenty-two years old, and I have lived in Lexington for most of my life. I write to you to again reiterate my thanks for voting to rename the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. As more individuals continue to push back against your recent decision, I am reminded that anti-racist action is often difficult and unpopular. However, renaming the cemetery was and continues to be the right thing to do, and no amount of backlash changes this. It is urgent to move forward with the cemetery renaming as well as follow it up with continued anti-racist action that is centered around the voices and needs of our community, members of color. Sincerely, Kelsey Vita.
The heat you are getting is justly deserved. Changing those names will net you nothing. Indeed, it will probably cost you in the long run. Pathetic pandering, but to who and for what? Dot, dot, dot. Larry K. Fix.
Hello, I'm a Lexingtonian born and raised who has resided in the city for nineteen-plus years. I want to thank the city council for making some difficult but morally correct decisions these past few weeks, despite backlash and general nastiness from others from within and largely, largely outside of our community. Remember that the Times article y'all are taking flak for identifies Lex Vegas as a liberal town, which it is. The locals support these actions and appreciate you taking them, and we have your back on this. Pay no attention to conservative Oklahoma transplants like Ben Klein. Not unmindful of your efforts, Rachel Brody.
Good evening. I hope this email finds you well. I would like to submit a short comment about my support of the cemetery name change for the eight-six city council meeting. That comment is below. As a young person living and working full-time in Lexington, I fully support the name change of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Thank you to those doing the work to find a name that honors and welcomes all members of our community. I am happy to live in a place where our government is actively working to better the whole and look forward to celebrating the new name. Thank you. If you need any more information from me, please let me know. Thank you. Lauren Shank.
This message is from Paul Creasy. It is not brave or courageous to jump on the bandwagon and want to make Lexington politically correct and not offend anyone. If it was not for the fame of the Civil War or Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson's famed Lexington, Virginia past, then nobody would have ever heard of Lexington. You literally owe your entire career and lives to these men. Why are you so ashamed of them? They didn't say black lives don't matter. They didn't vote for Trump. You are not making the world a better place. If anything, you are making a target on Lexington for BLM, Antifa, Antifa, and any other KKK-like organization to come in here to riot and protest. Do you want to make Lexington a better and safer place? Then don't talk to the New York Times. It seems to me you all are more concerned about getting fifteen minutes of fame than keeping Lexington a safe and nice place to live. You are throwing gas on the fire of starting a race war. I hope you all get in a lot more mean letters because none of you have the right to change history. Respectfully, Paul Creasy.
From Maria Creasy. I want to know what Stonewall Jackson personally did to you or Robert E. Lee. Have they personally called you any names today? How have they personally attacked you today? How have they made you feel threatened or offended today? Please explain to me how their actions from the grave have affected you today. I'm very curious to know. You have to realize that in their day and time, slavery was a normalcy. Was it morally right? Am I applauding them for their actions? Absolutely not. You have to realize, we as Americans have grown from these times, from those times, and I'm very thankful for how far we have come. Do you, do we still have a ways to go? Absolutely. But that doesn't include erasing our past. You have to realize we only grow and learn from our past. How will the future generations know how much of an impact Martin Luther King Jr. made if they never can really grasp how bad things really were in those times? I can remember learning about Rosa Parks in school. I can remember the feeling in my gut of what it must have felt like. I can remember so grateful that times have changed, and I was able to live in a world where you can friends with whoever you wanted. You have to realize it is not okay to try and erase history for your fifteen minutes of fame.
A letter from W.E. and Violet M. James. Born a Yankee and raised overseas, I resided in Lexington for my four years of college at Washington and Lee. Fifty-four years ago, I married a gracious young lady who was born and raised in the county, and we still own property in Rockbridge. We are in the area quite frequently. We have been completely dismayed and disgusted by the maniacal behavior of the city council in the last several years. First, the battle flag of the Army of Northern Virginia was banned from city property. The flags were concurrently removed from the upper chambers of Lee Chapel, along with the portraits of General Lee and George Washington in Horace's military uniform. We are now informed via that once prestigious but now utterly scurrilous publication, The New York Times, that the university is under pressure from its, its insidious faculty to remove the name of General Lee from the institution. I should say that following the Red Hen's appalling disregard for Southern gentility and hospitality exhibited against a prominent official of the Trump administration who was driven from the restaurant by the kind of mad dog root fanaticism which seems to dominate among the persons on the city council, we have done our best not to patronize any businesses in the city. We will continue to do so as long as the council maintains its repugnant policies towards things traditionally Southern. With respect to the claims that anything connected to generals Lee and Jackson smacks of slavery and oppression, we should like to emphasize that first, Virginia did not secede from the Union for the sake of slavery. Virginia was among the second tier of states to join the Confederacy, only after Mr. Lincoln made it clear he was prepared to wage an illegal war against the seven states that had originally quit the Union. There was nothing unconstitutional or unlawful about secession. Northern states had threatened to secede on earlier occasions, and even the great advocate of the Union, Daniel Webster, though he prayed no state ever would do so, admitted that secession was within the authority of a state if it said, if said state felt its interests or security were in jeopardy. With the remitting, with the unremitting efforts of Northern abolitionists to stir a race war in the South, it is clear that the Southern states were in danger from a crusade of meddlesome Northern fanatics. Any calm or rational solution to the slavery question had been rendered impossible by the intrusive and rabid words and deeds of the abolitionists. Second, it is a grievous error to consider generals Jackson and Lee to have been fire-eating supporters of slavery. Lee granted freedom to those, those whom he had inherited through his wife. I am uncertain about Jackson's possession of any slaves. He was certainly no plantation owner. Both generals were men of impeccable character, and their choice to serve Virginia was born of the deepest sentiments of patriotism and loyalty to their home state. Lee could not begin to fathom the idea of raising his sword against his beloved Virginia. And after the war, General Lee did his utmost to work for reconciliation. His dedication to the reconstruction of the college that granted him, him employment can never be fully repaid. And the city of Lexington would be no more than an obscure, pathetic, and unnoticed little town were it not for the schools in the community, which were served so well by generals Lee and Jackson. I therefore ask you, what is next? Are we to bulldoze Lee Chapel, burn General Jackson's house to the ground, dig up the remains of the generals and cast them into the moor? When does this orgy of madness reach its end? Not since the Puritans trashed gorgeous old churches or the Bolsheviks and Maoists sought to eradicate all traces of the past, have we seen such displays of mindless fanaticism. So long as the city of Lexington persists in its purge, so long will it be a loathsome citadel of shame and cowardice. Leave these men and their legacies alone. Sincerely, W.E. James, Reedsville, North Carolina, and Violet M. James, Need Draw Bond, Reedsville, North Carolina.
I would just like to thank the city council members for staying strong and committing to make our city a better and more welcoming place for the black people that live here. It is actually terrifying to think that the only monuments we have in Lexington are of those who thought of black people as lesser beings. Outsiders and locals will try to block the progress you are making with their hate disguised as heritage. But I know that you are all wise enough to see what is clearly the right thing to do, and you will be remembered as such. Thank you, Eli Welch.
I am Morgan Chittam. I am twenty-two years old and am a native to Rockbridge County. I was born and raised here, just like my parents and their parents. I'm writing today to thank Lexington City Council and to thank those who made a push to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It is my goal that Rockbridge lifts up and listens to the black voices in our community. I believe that the vote on July second to rename the cemetery is one step closer to doing this. Although I am critical of our past, it is because I deeply care for this place I call home. Thank you again. Sincerely, Morgan Chittam.
Dear Lexington City Council, today in Atlanta, Georgia, Representative John Lewis, freedom rider, civil rights pioneer, patriot, and unblaging believer in the power of unity and perseverance and the struggle to manifest the freedom and equality envisioned in the United States Constitution, was given the tributes of a true American. Please do not allow messages of hate to distract you from gestures of respect and gratitude for the man whose last hope was that we would answer the highest calling of the heart and stand up for what you truly believe. Thank you for not giving way to hate as you.
Thank you for not giving way to hate as you proceed with plans to make Lexington inclusive to her citizens and visitors alike. Elizabeth Keim, London, UK.
This message is from Alicia Yates. When my family and I moved here almost 20 years ago, some of it was due to the beauty. It reminds us, it reminded us of our home we had left and mostly due to the historical significance of the area and town. I understand with all the issues going on in the world now, people are upset, concerned, et cetera. But where does it stop? Are we offended? Why Aunt Jemima pancake syrup? Uncle Ben's white rice? White bread? Chocolate ice cream? Lexington, Virginia is a beautiful town. It is a historical town. Stonewall is buried in that cemetery. Are we gonna designate, excuse me, are we gonna desecrate his grace and remove his headstone? Are we going to remove all Civil War headstones that honor those that served black and white? Are we going to remove and rename the All Black Cemetery in Lexington? Tear down Stonewall's house? Then we need to close VMI. It started prior to or during the Civil War and would not accept blacks. So isn't that offensive? My point is, all of this is part of history. Yes, a very dark part of history, but history. Blacks tribes sold their own into slavery. White Irish were sold into slavery. By all means, yes, it was wrong, woefully wrong, but history. If we keep removing history, talking, taking down monuments, renaming places, and removing history from the history books, after, after a few generations, no one will remember, and history will repeat itself. It's, history itself has taught us that. Do we close all Civil War battlefields? Do we close the Holocaust Museum? In Germany, we can visit the Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration camp. As a reminder, to never treat people that way again, just because they may or may not believe the same way we do, or their skin color is different. Are we going to close the Civil War Museum on VMI's campus? Lexington, Virginia is a beautiful little town steeped in history. Tourists come here for the history, Civil War buffs, et cetera. I believe it is a sad, sad day and truly hope the council will not rename or remove statues from this town. Let them be a reminder, this, what happened during the Civil War slavery, that we as a town people and Mario. Never, never do this again and repeat history. Please leave them, it can't be both way. We can't rename streets, buildings, et cetera, places and things that have been here for over 100 years and call it a historic town. If names will be renamed, then take down the signs saying Historic Lexington.
This is from Michael Steele. To those sitting members of the Lexington City Council, including Mayor Friedman, I am a born and raised Lexingtonian. I have always been very proud of my hometown and my heritage. Even though I have not lived in Virginia for over 20 years, my heart will always reside there. As for the political atmosphere within the city currently, I am appalled. The leftist Democrats have and are ruining the city. As for the removal, renaming of any Confederate statue or street, I am completely disagree with these actions. I say, leave it alone. Thomas Stonewall Jackson, a brave and honorable man, a religious man that had more conviction and character than anyone that was elected or is currently elected to the city of Lexington's council. This also goes for the great Robert E. Lee. All of these council members, including the mayor, should be ashamed. Yes, you, Frank. They should all be embracing history, not destroying and erasing it. I personally think each one of the sitting council members are spineless cowards that are bowing down to the extreme leftist Democrat, in parentheses, WNL, as well as the terrorist groups of BLM and Antifa. So in summation, no. I will, I will not provide a supporting comment for you to push your destructive liberal agenda and deceitful lies that are destroying our nation and apparently now little Lexington, Virginia. Michael Steele, Bethel Park, Virginia, formerly of Lexington, Virginia.
A note from Allison Katzen. Keep the names of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery and anything else you are considering renaming in a fit of vitriol alone. Why is the New York Times and its readership the only ones who get to a say here? I am not out of state. I live in Virginia and grew up in southwest Virginia. Complainers are ruining our state with their incessant demands.
My letters from anonymous, so I will not be reading that into the record.
Thank you, Chuck.
From Maxie McConnell. I simply want to say thank you for agreeing to rename the cemetery. I believe it is so important for the future of our community.
Next is from Reginald Early. Thank you for having courage for acting in an anti-racist manner in the renaming of the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. The community will be better off in the long run for all of us. The People Cemetery of Lexington. Thank you.
This message is from Timothy Lubin. I write in appreciation of the Lexington City Council's decision to rename the erstwhile Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. Stonewall Jackson certainly has a notable role in Lexington's history, but it is a chapter soaked in the blood of slavery and treason that have long glossed over, that have long been glossed over, and in fact, presenting only in a sanitized glorifying light, which compounds the shame and perpetuates the injustice. It is long past time to stop having public institutions like the city cemetery named in honor of the heroes of the Confederacy.
This is from Mary Peterson. I'm writing to express my appreciation for the members of the Lexington City Council and the difficult work they're doing to make Lexington more welcoming to everyone. With regard to the cemetery's name change, I have a loved one buried there, and I'm sure he would approve of this gesture of loving kindness for our fellow community members. Change is always difficult, yet if done for the right reasons, it is worthwhile. Thank you, Mary Peterson.
A note from Becky Edmondson. I am not a resident of the city of Lexington, but I would like to offer my support to the city council for the efforts they are making to improve race relations in the city. It's a very hard thing to make changes, especially emotionally charged changes, and I applaud their efforts to do the right thing.
From Jennifer Fanon. I am so disappointed that we, in quotes, are even in this situation, a place where children with no knowledge of history or historical pride have a say in destroying the town of Lexington. In short, Lexington is what it is because of its history. Please do not change.
I write to thank you for the courage to remove Stonewall Jackson's name from the cemetery. The courage, vision, and hope for the future shine in the action. I lived in Richmond for over 30 years, and I've been so excited to report to my Richmond family and friends that Lexington is moving ahead with compassion and allyship. I also truly believe practically it will keep Lexington alive. As people relocate, and I understand from a local business friend that people are relocating to Shenandoah, especially as people figure out telecommuting more and more, I believe Lexington can welcome well thought, will, can welcome well thought out hospitable and sustainable, embracing of lively and life-giving commerce, inclusion, and community. Very gratefully and sincerely, Martha Burford.
This is from Chris Gavaleer. I just want to thank the council for the decision to rename the cemetery. Though I appreciate that some folks don't like the decision, it still seems like the right thing to do, to me. It also seems pretty mild. It's not like anyone is digging up Jackson or even moving his statue. It's his burial spot, and so probably the one place on the planet a memorial statue is appropriate. But there's no reason why the whole cemetery should be named after just one person, especially since it had been called something else for decades after his death. If we respected history, it would, it would never have been renamed after Jackson in the first place. Leave Jackson's burial spot alone, but let the cemetery name reflect the whole community and not just one segment of it. That seems like a fair compromise to me. If either side is demanding more than that, then they're the ones being unreasonable.
This message is from Ellen Mayock. Thank you to Lexington City Council for your thoughtful and time-consuming consideration of anti-racist actions in our city, and especially for the work on renaming the cemetery on Main Street. I really appreciate your work and dedication.
This is from Jennifer Young Connor. I am disgusted to see templates on Facebook where college students out of towners are being asked to fill just, to just fill in the blanks, being for and suggesting name change for the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. Shouldn't this be up to the people who have loved ones in the cemetery, who have burial plots at the cemetery, or even the people who pay taxes, actual residents? I myself have lived in Rockbridge County for 23 years. My husband's family has been here from the start. He is an Imonican Indian. He was born and raised here and plans on living and dying here. We own property in Rockbridge County and frequent the downtown area with our business. It's a name for goodness sakes. We just wanted to let you know we suggest keeping the name Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. Please do not let this cancel culture ruin our town.
I have a note from Robert Hopkins. I'm a 23-year resident of Lexington and live at 317 South Main Street. That is almost directly across the street from the former Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I recommend the name be changed to the Lexington Memorial Cemetery. Keep it simple and meaningful to all those buried there.
Sorry about this, I'm having a technical issue. From Robert Capito Clark. We are so proud of Lexington for seizing the opportunity to make changes to assure the dignity and worth of every person who lives or visits our fine place in the world. The city, our Episcopal church, our hospital, and even two of our hotels have placed our future above our past. Well done, Lexington. Our history will be with us and taught in our schools, but no longer honored by images of dark days in our past. Strong work, Lexington. You do us proud.
I live just outside of Lexington, past the Moose Lodge. Lexington is my family's city. We shop here, we eat here. My children will be going to Lexington schools soon. I wanted to let the city council know that I am against the name change of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Please stop trying to erase history. Lucas Cookson, Lexington resident.
Marilyn, you're still muted.
Adley Elizabeth Hunter Hawks. I'm keeping up with the pressure by rescinding the letter I sent on July 3rd regarding my firm wishes that the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery not be renamed. I hope the county listens to the constituents and honors those who are resting peacefully in the cemetery, not the protesters and not the media. Please reread my letter below and consider it when making your decision. Thank you for your time. It is very upsetting to hear that Lexington, that city council is considering renaming streets and even more so Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Across the globe, a large portion of uninformed protesters have been vandalizing property that does not belong to them and not getting arrested for it. In addition to not being arrested for their crimes, we have also been rewarding them by giving them permission to decide what historical structure shall be allowed to remain where they currently reside and which structure shall not. This is teaching these protesters that their method, method is working and that they should continue to go around the democratic process and behave like bullies in order to get their way. As a millennial, I encourage you not to indulge their requests. Do not rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Renaming streets after the name has been in use for so long is ridiculous. It bears no real basis in the arguments the opposition claims. If it did, we would have been opposed to the name generations ago. This is a power play. That is all it is. Should this proceed forward to discussion of a vote, this needs to be a full ballot vote by every citizen in Lexington, including the people who have relatives resting peacefully in Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This is not a decision for the city council nor for the mayor, but rather the people themselves in the form of a vote. In this case, a vote by the city council alone would be equal to no vote at all. It is extremely important that this vote not be given preferential preference to those who use Facebook and Zoom, which are primarily Generation X, millennial, and Gen Z women. There is a significantly higher number of women who use Facebook than men, and an even higher of women who routinely log in than men. Do not base any assumption on the overall perspectives of your community on Zoom meetings. That is automatically marginalizing the representation of your community. It is important to include every voice and make sure it is done offline and in a fair democratic manner. I sincerely hope you think about this situation and think hard. Just because everyone else is doing it doesn't mean that we should do it too. Everyone else's decision will have consequences and repercussions, and it is extremely important not to follow the pack. Do not change the names of any streets or the cemetery. Thank you for your time.
This message is from Leslie Morris Thornton. I am writing to you from North Carolina. For the last seven years, I lived in North Carolina, but my home will always be Rockbridge County. About a year ago, I started a new relationship with a man who has traveled the world with the military, and after 22 years, he retired. I know he's never been to Rockbridge County, and I talk about everything Rockbridge County to him, landscape, mountains, swimming holes, et cetera. This man had been all over, but my stories made him really want to see where I'm from. So I took him home to Rockbridge County, and we spent the weekend traveling to a home game at UVA. That was last fall. We had planned a trip this past spring to go waterfall hunting, but then COVID happened. He knew enough about the city from the Red Hen news that I was embarrassed to admit that was home. So this fall, we had planned to do all things historical during that trip. He hails from the West Coast and knows only what was taught in school about the Civil War. He's been very excited to visit and learn more. I've decided that I don't want to take him if cancel culture is continued and the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery is renamed. He agrees. We will take our money and go elsewhere. There is so much more to see and do in Virginia than to support the erasing of history. If this continues, I will not spend another penny in the city of Lexington. Think very carefully. There are many others like me and probably even more dedicated to not visiting the city of Lexington. You cannot let the few rule the majority. You may win the fight, but in the end, you will lose. Thank you.
From Teresa Villa. I am contacting you regarding the meeting on August 6th regarding name change of cemetery there in Lexington. I am in favor of names staying as is, Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. I feel that a few people does not voice the opinion of all residents of the county of Rockbridge. Please reconsider and place the signs back as they were with Stonewall Jackson's name at each entrance. Thank you.
I have a note from Helen Edwards. I am writing this to show my opposition to changing all the street names, et cetera, in our very historic Lexington. It will be expensive, and I believe many tourists will stop coming here, which will result in less money coming into town.
From Nancy Ramsey Brown. I'm writing in support to stop the lunacy of attempting to erase our country and city history. It's that history. We learn from our history. It's like my childhood. I cannot undo mistakes. I can only learn from them and move forward. The sensitivity culture is out of control. I do not understand how a name can, can, can conjure such emotions. I was born in Stonewall Jackson Hospital. This location is on my birth certificate. Will that be changed to the new name? I live in Lexington. Will all the streets change their names, i.e. Jackson Lee, et cetera? Recently, the Ari Lee Hotel name was changed to The Gin. I understand the owners have a right to name it what they want. However, that landmark hotel will forever be to me, known to me as the Ari Lee Hotel. I've enjoyed many a glass of wine and food from the deck. This action has soured my desire to go to The Gin. My husband is a VMI graduate and served in the US Navy for 27 years. I worked for 39 years as a federal employee in the field of finance. My last 15 years supported budget slash accounting of 88 Navy bases worldwide. I was afforded the opportunity to experience other cultures to include Italy, Spain, Japan, and various regions and territories of the US. I cannot imagine how radical groups can wield such authority by I cannot imagine how radical groups can wield such authority by destruction and changing names to suit their small-minded agenda. I was born and raised in Rockbridge County. We recently moved home to Lexington to enjoy the history and convenience of living in town. Lexington is a historical city that we are all proud to call home. Finally, I believe our schools have failed to teach history to our children. Testing generates knee-jerk reactions. For example, students were lagging behind worldwide in math and science. More focus is placed on these courses to raise poor test scores. Emphasis in history lags. My point is, the new generations are not learned in history and how our federal state and local governments work. We are a country of laws, rules, and regulations. This knowledge is just as important to becoming an informed citizen as learning new math. If people took the time to read about these leaders they are desiring to erase, they would discover other contributions these people made following the end of the Civil War. Robert E. Lee is a prime example. He saved Washington College from closing. Where would our city be without WNL? VMI is a proud and longstanding engineering-focused school, proud on the citizen soldiers produced for our leaders in government, engineering, science, math, economics, medicine, law, and the list goes on. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion. I think we should leave out, I'm gonna guess that's our, I think we should leave our history alone. However, this situation does offer an opportunity for our civic leaders to perhaps review other historical figures and honor them as well. Have the council review, have the council review the process to make it easier for groups to honor people who contribute to our community. There is growth in our town. Engage the citizenry who want to make these changes. Please do not destroy the very thing that makes Lexington a longstanding historical town. Make it better.
From Carla H. Huffman. I just want to say that I do not support renaming Stonewall Jackson Cemetery or anything else in Lexington. Changing names does not change history, and we Lexington natives deserve to keep our town as it is.
Lady Hopkins. If it is voted on by city council to rename streets, cemeteries, and public buildings in Lexington, is the council prepared to come up with an estimated cost for new signage? Lexington taxpayers have a right to know how their tax dollars are being spent.
As 40-year residents of Rockbridge County, we are very happy and relieved about the actions you have taken recently to further racial and social justice in our community. We realize you have gotten a lot of passionate pushback about renaming the cemetery, but we welcome your responsiveness to the young Lexington natives who spoke out about their experiences. Please continue to take brave actions along these lines as you consider renaming streets, et cetera. Appreciatively, Mr. and Mrs. Malcolm A. Crosby, Rockbridge County.
This is from Charles Mayock Bradley. I am writing to express my appreciation for your recent decision to rename the cemetery on Main Street. The change is an important and necessary step in reckoning with our town's history and making our community a more welcoming place for all. In addition to renaming the many other places, streets, and buildings in Lexington that will still carry the names of Confederate generals and other racist figures, I hope that the city council will follow the lead of individuals and organizations in our community that are engaged in anti-racist work in other areas. Supporting this anti-racist work means, among other things, examining and updating the curricula of Lexington City Schools, expanding the resources available in Black students and other students of color in city schools, ensuring equitable business opportunities for Lexington's Black residents and other residents of color, and making efforts to hire more employees of color in Lexington City Schools and city government. Thank you again for your decision, and I look forward to seeing how city council builds on it.
A note from Alicia Hamilton. It is bad enough that the cities of our Commonwealth are self-destructing, but it now appears that even the center, the valley, is caving. No point even living in Virginia anymore if the outsiders whining demands are all that counts. Don't think it will end here either. If you are so sure about public support for a name change, then put it to a referendum. This is an issue very wrapped up with the identity of Lexington and is being pushed through under pressure only from an extreme radical element. Many in the community are purposely being shut out if they aren't able to hop on to the upcoming Zoom meeting. Even if they did, we pretty much know that the decision has already been made. The past, the present, and the future matter.
From Allison Katzman. I'm brokenhearted that Virginians are trying to gut everything we have grown up with. This is where our general Stonewall is buried. Without the name, it is virtually meaningless. Somehow, we are always outgunned by shouting radical mobs vandalizing and threatening while ordinary citizens have to worry about jobs, family, and stability. We have responsibilities and don't have three months to just live in a dirty encampment in a town square as they did in Richmond or Portland. Of course, then guess whose viewpoint prevails? And guess who the city officials listen to?
A letter from Sherri Humphrey. Did I hear this correctly regarding renaming Stonewall Jackson Cemetery? Instead of wasting time asking the public, consider asking the Confederate soldiers who are interred in the cemetery, as well as the other luminaries who served with Jackson, what they think. Their seed shall remain forever and their glory shall not be blotted out. Their bodies are buried in peace, but their name liveth forever. Ecclesiasticus 44. Get a life.
From Seth Marlowe. I grew up in Lexington and my family lived there for some time. It has a special place in my heart, and when I return, I often visit the graves of loved ones in Lexington's historic cemetery. I was so pleased and proud of Lexington when I learned the cemetery would be renamed. I'm writing to show my support for Oak Grove Cemetery as the new name. This beautiful spot deserves an equally beautiful name.
This message is from Alan Massey. I'm on Team Oak Grove. I grew up in Lexington. I no longer live or vote in Lexington, but my parents still live there, and in not too many years, we buried in the former Presbyterian Cemetery, recently Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I am pleased and comforted that the city council has decided to change the name of the cemetery. Of the four proposed names, I urge the council to select Oak Grove as the new name. Unity is nice, but sadly draws attention to the discord that has surrounded the effort to come to terms with Lexington's and America's Confederate legacy. Lexington Memorial suggests that Lexington is being memorialized, but Lexington is still with us. It may also suggest an unearned primacy over Evergreen Cemetery, which would be unfortunate given the racial legacy of the two cemeteries. Main Street Cemetery sounds to me more like how one would name a deli or a drugstore. Oak Grove is pretty dignified and distinctive and suggests a lovely symmetry with Evergreen. I hope the council will adopt this name. Thank you.
This is from Kirk Waller. Dear members of council, I would like to reinforce and voice my support of renaming the cemetery and more generally to make Lexington a better, kinder, and more inviting place, one that makes us proud to call our hometown instead of one that pushes people away. I think the recent article in The Times summed up the internal conflicts and contradictions I have seen while growing up here quite well. Please don't bow to the mean-spirited. Please continue to do the right thing.
I have a note from Brooke Humphries. Dear members of city council, my name is Brooke Humphries and I live in Lexington, and I have lived in Lexington for my entire pre-college life. I'm writing today to thank you for making the right decision of renaming the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. This is the first step towards making our little city a more welcoming and a loving community towards all visitors and citizens alike. The Civil War was a short-lived rebellion against the United States led by men who were fighting for their right to enslave human beings. Stonewall Jackson should have no positive recognition or glorification for his involvement in the Civil War. Changing the name of the cemetery helps our community finally start to break the ties we have with the Civil War era. Thank you for starting the journey to bring Lexington into the future where racist history can finally be laid to rest. Thank you again.
From Sally D. P. Tompkins. I was born in Stonewall Jackson's home in 1948 and am proud of the fact that I am one of the Stonewall babies. That's in quotes. I grew up in Rockbridge County, moved to Charleston, South Carolina in 2000. For many years, my husband and I decided to move back to Lexington, Virginia. We have been disappointed in the leftist turn Lexington has taken, so much so that we are selling our house and moving. I have a graduate degree in history, so I have an appreciation for the past. I have many relatives buried in Stonewall Jackson Cemetery, including Sally Dudley Pendleton Tompkins, for whom I am named. I truly don't understand why the current cancel culture wants to destroy our past. One appreciates the past, learns from the past, and moves forward in a positive direction. There is no positivity in destroying and replacing our past. I feel that members of the Washington Lee community, as well as the members of the Red Hen community, are leaders in the cancel culture in Lexington. We have two granddaughters who are considering Washington Lee as their college choice, and my husband and I have advised them not to apply because we do not believe they would receive a balanced education. I am proud of VMI for standing for their heritage. Lexington, Virginia has always been a treasure trove of history. When all of the history is destroyed and canceled, why would anyone want to visit it? I appreciate the opportunity to give the city council my thoughts. I would hope that this group would give the current situation more thoughtful consideration instead of instituting new names as a knee-jerk reaction to current events.
My name is Pamela St. Clair, and I am a Rockbridge County resident. I am not in favor of the cancel culture that is sweeping our nation. There's a lot of emotion on both sides, and both sides have expressed their opinions and beliefs quite heartily. Making government decisions at all levels, however, should not be based on heated emotions but actual verifiable facts. That being said, I have the following questions. One, do you have a plan in place to eliminate all references to the Confederacy citywide? Two, if you have a plan in place to eliminate these aforementioned references, have you prepared a cost analysis to the community? Three, do you have actual financial figures on how much tourism that we actually receive based on Civil War history, and in addition, how much actual income is generated by Civil War tourism? Four, have you consulted a marketing professional to rebrand and promote Lexington in a different way without referencing its Civil War ties? These questions are important as you move forward with any plans since knee-jerk emotional reactions have a tendency to backfire. I remember as a young elementary school student at Waddell in the 1970s, all the time, effort, and money that was invested into making Lexington a Civil War showcase for tourists. All of the overhead power lines were buried, new signage was put up, and the sidewalks went from plain old concrete to beautiful decorative brick. These actions were supposed to create tourism and bring money to the town. Did that happen, or was it completely misguided and a waste of taxpayer dollars? Since I was only in the third grade, I am sure you could find some of these original committee members that had a hand in the transformation of Lexington and ask them if their plan created revenue for the city. One thing that did happen with the gentrification of Lexington was to make it extremely expensive to live there and to have a business in town. We lost many local businesses that served the residents of both Rockbridge County and Lexington. Instead of having McCrum's Drug Store to grab a bite to eat in a Cherry Coke, we added more banks. Instead of having a local grocery store where the citizens of Lexington could easily walk for their weekly supplies, we added overpriced tourist stores that don't serve the local citizenry. In case you don't know this yet, or no one has told you, Rockbridge County residents do not feel welcomed in Lexington. They feel snubbed and insulted, and most never waste their time even going downtown since it's a town only geared towards the colleges and tourists. You will never be able to come to an agreement on individual beliefs. For some, Lee and Jackson will always be traitors and despicable people. To others, they will always be heroes and gentlemen of honor and duty. That's why I ask for the council to move forward on any future plans using logic and reason. Having only anecdotal evidence and not the full picture, I do know that I have family both in New York and France that enjoy coming to Lexington for the sole purpose of being in close proximity to both Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson, two men that these relatives would call the best military strategists in modern history. I'm not a military history buff and don't consider myself an expert, but if this is truly something that your people enjoy, you may be cutting off your nose in spite of your face. That is why I feel that you owe it to yourselves and to the community you serve to do real statistical analysis of the types of visitors that actually come to Lexington to spend their hard-earned dollars. Respectfully submitted, Pamela St. Clair.
Eli Spencer. I'm writing to thank you for changing the name of the cemetery and for working to make Lexington, excuse me, a more inclusive and welcoming place for all. I was born and raised here, I live here now, and my family has been here for at least five generations, whatever that's worth. I know that Lexington and Rockbridge County will always be home for me, and that's why I'm excited to see what's next for this town as we reckon with our history and try to shape a future that brings people together instead of driving them apart.
This message is from Lucy Handstead. I wanted to express my full support and appreciation for the work you all are doing to change the name of the cemetery off Main Street. Although I know there are lots of negative comments that will be coming through, this change is past due and for the best. Our city can no longer glorify and honor the Confederacy at the expense of its citizens.
From Ellen Satrum. I am writing to thank you for your vote to change the name of Downtown Cemetery. We are sending the positive message that our community is no longer tied to a single lost cause narrative, but is instead forward-looking with far more to offer. I found the suggestions mentioned in today's News Gazette very appropriate, and I'm glad you are working to highlight Evergreen Cemetery as well. Thank you.
A note from Kevin Connors. My name is Kevin Connors, and I am writing to offer my support for the changing of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery to a name that more accurately reflects the values of Lexington. I grew up in Lexington, living there from age four to 18, and I always appreciated the rich history of the town. It is, of course, important to know our history, but the ugly parts do not need to be revered. I am always saddened to see the Confederate flag rally that coincides with Martin Luther King Jr. Day. If you compare that to, say, the Civil War Museum at VMI, there is a huge difference in intentionality and tone. I'm writing because I've heard there's a pushback on this decision, but also because I'm hoping the town will choose a name that can both represent the history of Lexington while showing support for the long overdue conversations on systemic racism that our country recently started to discuss.
From Tenny Sen. Thank you for preserving, persevering in your efforts to make our community a more equitable and just one, a reflection of what our country should be, that's striving toward a more perfect union. I am in awe of your courage in the face of hostility and hate. You are role models, models of loyalty to our community and country. I admire you and am deeply grateful to you. Looking forward to hearing the new name for the cemetery. Tenny Sen, Rockbridge County.
From Ammoni Hopkins. I heard that the Lexington City Council is receiving pushback on the proposed name change to the cemetery, and I want to provide a supportive voice to the council's anti-racist efforts. As always in racial matters, I think it's best to defer to our Black leaders, community members, and neighbors. It is clear that many of them would like to see the cemetery's name changed, and I consider it our duty to provide a platform for their voices and lost histories. Thank you for your work and commitment to racial equity in Lexington.
Leslie Wheeler. This is just a, dear members of the Lexington City Council, this is just a note to thank you for your leadership in a very hard time. I find it deeply heartening that the cemetery is being renamed right now, whatever name you choose, and that your discussions will extend to other ways we can be a better, more welcoming city. I've lived here for 18 years, distressed by Lexington's identification with the lost cause and the racism that identification implies.
Seeing that cloud begin to lift is a more moving experience than I can express. Thank you.
This message is from Jean Wilson. Please, please, please support the renaming of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. It is so important to our community to remove signs of the rebel cause, slave owners, and to let everybody, everyone know that our town does not support racism.
From Isabel Richter. Dear members of city council, as a lifetime resident of Lexington, I'm writing to express my support for the renaming of cemetery on Main Street. The Oak Grove name is a personal favorite because it highlights a beautiful picture of the cemetery's early history and pairs nicely with Evergreen Cemetery name. Thank you for the, doing the work to make our community more welcoming and putting your personal comfort on the line to make a safer city for our future generations.
I have a note from Jordan Arnold. Thank you to the Lexington City Council for your commitment to pursuing racial equity in our community. I am a community member and my father is buried in the cemetery downtown. Changing the name of the cemetery is an important first step in making our town a more welcoming place. Thank you for your courage.
From, excuse me, Heather Hopkins. To date, August 6, 2020, we have 5,411 individuals who oppose the renaming of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This petition grows by the hundreds per day. Your continued assertion to change the name of the cemetery is unauthorized by many of your residents who are your taxpayers. They were uninformed of this declaration to change the cemetery name, and many of the elder residents do not, I'm going to guess says do not, do not use Zoom, Facebook, or your portal. Furthermore, deeming this to be an unfair practice and not in the best interest for the community. The fact that you are still continuing the emergency declaration and ordinance permitting city council and subsidiary entities to conduct electronic meetings is an affirmation that you do not want the public to be heard in person as city council prefers to pick and choose which online comments, letters, and formalities suit your best interests. Members of city council, including Mayor Frank Friedman, approved the permits and even attend the George Floyd vigil and Black Lives Matter movement, but you still refuse to hold public hearings. Why is that? There is an outcry from citizens all around the United States pleading for you to stop with the historical name changes. Keep our beautiful historical town as is. Tourists are claiming that they will never visit again. College parents are proclaiming that they will not spend a dime in our town and will take their business elsewhere. Is this the warm and fuzzy impression that you want for our city? It is also being sought out that Stonewall Jackson is federally protected because Stonewall is a veteran and is protected by the Veterans Administration. We, the people, in quotes, deserve a proper stake in this decision, and it needs to be formally put to a ballot in the next election.
Thank you, Chuck. I just wanted, along with that letter, I wanted to affirm that we did receive the petition and comments from all the folks that signed the petition that added comments to it. They will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but they are not read individually. When we received other petitions in the past on other issues or from a group on July 2, those names of petitioners were not read, nor were any comments that were included with that petition. It's generally our policy to read comments submitted directly by email, certainly in this time of Zoom and COVID. Typically, we, again, would invite people to come and speak and share their comments. But all other submissions, Facebook petitions and things of that instance are not read, but they are included in the minutes. I just wanted to clarify that piece and make certain that the public was aware that Ms. Hopkins did provide us with the names that she's received so far and all the comments which are available. If you'd like to have a copy, you can contact her or the city clerk. Leslie, if you'd like to proceed.
Sure. A letter from Lisa Tracy. Thank you for your courageous and very necessary response regarding the legacy of racism in our town, notably regarding the cemetery. I think human beings tend to resist change. It can be scary and uncomfortable, but when it brings greater health and good growth, it is so worth it.
Sophia Caraza. Members of city council, my name is Sophia Caraza, and I have lived in Lexington for the past 15 years. I wanted to write in my support of the work you have been doing to make Lexington a more welcomed place for everyone. I am thankful that you're keeping Lexington from remaining a shrine of the, to the Confederacy, and rather, working to make the necessary changes to eradicate harmful symbols in the city. I understand that you all have been facing a lot of backlash from some individuals about the cemetery name change, and I am truly sorry that you have to deal with that. I am grateful that you have not let these beliefs dissuade you from the course of positive change. Those of us who are looking to make Lexington a better and more inclusive place, wholeheartedly support you.
Sorry, this letter is from Mark Ritter. Members of city council, I'm a 22-year resident of Lexington, a homeowner, have raised four children who have attended public schools in the city in Rockbridge County, and I'm writing in support of changing the name of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Public monuments and memorials should honor those who worked for the common good and sought liberty and justice for all. Confederates who fought primarily, if not entirely, to support the institution of slavery should not be memorialized in this manner. Contrary to what some would like others to think, efforts like this do not seek to erase history, which will live on in classrooms, books, and museums, nor are they yielding to political correctness. Rather, they seek to shed light on the truth, however uncomfortable that may be for some, and make us a more welcoming and inclusive community.
This is from Chris Ritter. Dear members of city council, my name is Chris Ritter. I'm 21 years old, and I've lived in Lexington for nearly all my life. I'd like to take this moment to express my appreciation for the city council's decision to remove Stonewall Jackson's name from the cemetery in Lexington. This is a decision I'm proud of, like many of my fellow Lexingtonians, and I appreciate the council doing what is right in the eyes of the people who live here. This is a small step forward for a more welcoming town, and in this moment, I'm immensely proud to be a Lexingtonian.
I have a note from June Keller. To whom it may concern, my name is June Keller, and I own a residence in Lexington. The home was built in 1936 by my late father-in-law, Joseph Keller, Sr. Both he and my late mother-in-law are buried in the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This past November, my husband, Joseph H. Keller, Jr., also was laid to rest there. This family has multiple generations of family who resided in Lexington or Rockbridge County. I feel strongly that renaming this cemetery is short-sighted and an opportunistic panic reaction to the current mob mentality. Mr. Ayers stated in the News Gazette article that many more letters requested that the name remain unchanged. I heartily agree. If a majority of respondents feel strongly about not changing the name of the cemetery, then that should be honored. How many members of this cemetery commission are natives of Lexington or have relatives buried there? Don't change the name. I also read that you are focusing on suggested names. Although I prefer the name be unchanged, I have a preference for Lexington Cemetery. Lexington local.
From Yolanda, I guess it's Sowers or Sowers. Good afternoon. I am writing this email to add my voice with the thousands who are ardently opposed to the removal of Stonewall Jackson's name from a local cemetery and to the, and to the efforts to force changes to street names and removal of statues. The efforts by a loud minority to eradicate something simply by claiming it emotional offense is reprehensible. The people of our American history, particularly those from the Civil War era with whom this minority group feels so offended by, were adequately dealt with during their time on earth. They faced the consequences for their actions, and many of them went on to live and better the United States of America. Robert E. Lee is an excellent example of this, yet now his name is being erased by a close-minded minority that cannot separate how they choose to feel with the sometimes harsh and ugly truth of history and with the important lessons found in it. Their desire to judge and punish people from certain areas in our history according to today's social standards is as absurd as me grounding my child for their great-grandmother's misbehavior 150 years ago. This coddled minority rages about tolerance and acceptance, yet in my experience, they are incapable of practicing it because they are ruled by their immature emotional response to a history that cannot be changed. Their actions are detrimental to the future of not only Lexington and the Commonwealth, but to our great nation. I moved to Lexington two years ago with my family after my husband's 30-year military career came to an end. He is a native Virginian from Stuart. Every day, I walk the grounds of VMI and Washington and Lee and beyond into Lexington. Throughout the summer, the number of people I have encountered who are coming to see the statues, the chapel, the museums, the cemetery, the Jackson House, and the town in general have increased as word has spread about the proposed changes. Some have personal connections to the area, and some are history buffs, and some are travelers who took a deliberate detour to come here, and they all have expressed one singular thought. They came to see everything before it is, quote, "ruined and removed," unquote, and they will never be back, quote, "if," unquote, that happens. Even amongst local people I know and speak with, they already take their time and money elsewhere because they do not want to support such a narrow-minded town that caves to what amounts to a toddler having a tantrum until they get their way. I encourage you and the council to consider the decision of VMI related to the statues and names on post. Read the letter from General P. I personally believe that it's the right decision and the smart decision, and Lexington, Virginia, and America would do well to take similar actions. Thank you for your time and allowing my submission of this letter. I hope that all voices will be heard tonight.
Dear members of city council, my name is Robbie Gardner. I have lived in Lexington since I was six years old. I'm writing in support of your recent decisions to move toward making Lexington a more inclusive and welcoming community for all of its citizens. I trust that the changes made now will forever be looked upon favorably in history. Thank you and best regards, Robbie.
Members of city council, I grew up in Lexington, attending Lurden Downing Middle School and Rockbridge County High School. As a local, I am writing to applaud the decision to rename the cemetery. Ben Ritter. Benjamin Ritter.
Dear Lexington City Council, I'm Caitlin Weitzel, a Lexington, Rockbridge County resident for nearly all of my life, over 20 years. I would like to offer my sincere thanks for taking my concerns seriously last month regarding the renaming of the cemetery roads and other important locations in and around the Lexington area. I am looking forward to this positive change in the cemetery's name. I know it will make our area a more welcoming place to live and to visit. Thank you again for your efforts in making this possible. Warm regards, Caitlin.
This is from McKelvey Courtney Collins. Dear members of city council, my name is McKelvey Courtney Collins, and I'm a resident of Lexington. I'm writing to once again express my support for the city council and their renaming of the town cemetery. There is so much work to be done in Lexington when it comes to anti-racism efforts, and renaming the cemetery is a much overdue first step. It's necessary that we keep up this effort in order to make our town and our country a better and more equitable place. I thank the city council for their actions and efforts.
David, I think, right, breaking the action as Dawn joined us on Zoom and presented her thoughts, and asked Chuck to pick up with Tuck Bauer Fine, please.
From Tuck Bauer Fine. Hi. I just wanted to offer to the city council's anti-racism efforts. I believe, I believe the city has to prioritize the interest of black citizens in Lexington to heal and correct for historic inequities. I believe the city needs to make efforts to support the recruiting and retaining of black teachers, the redevelopment of black-owned businesses in Lexington, and increase black homeownership. But the most important thing is to hear from and respond to black citizens about what will make life, I'm sorry, what will make life in Lexington healthier and more equitable for them. The white community cannot effectively tell you this except as allies who can amplify the message of our black neighbors and as people with resources who help achieve the goals. If the black community in Lexington is telling, telling you the name of the cemetery needs to be changed, then it does. But improving outcomes and real-life metrics is the most important thing.
My name is Musa Kamara. I grew up in Lexington. I would just like to emphasize other community members' gratitude to the members of city council for your commitment to changing the name of the cemetery. While this is a small step, it shows that you are all, you all are interested in creating a more inclusive Lexington. Thank you.
Hello. I grew up in nearby Lynchburg back in the 70s and still reside there. I haven't spent a dime in Lexington since the Red Hen took over. I miss the old Lexington, taking the carriage ride, touring the cemetery, the ghost tour, the Celtic bookstore, et cetera. Hopefully, the town will turn away from socialism one day, but until then, I'll spend my time and money in other historic towns like Buchanan. Lexington has changed, and it's not family-friendly or honest historically anymore. Also, working with the socialists behind the scenes doesn't work either. The truth comes out at some point. Respectfully, Alan May.
Dear city council, my name is Haley Klein, and I have lived in Lexington for the past 15 years. I am writing to express my support for your decision to change the name of the cemetery. Thank you for standing by this decision and embracing positive change in Lexington despite the opposition that you are currently facing. It is good to know that you are willing to make an important stride even when criticism can be intense and personal. I look forward to hearing an official new name for the cemetery, and I hope that this represents the first of many steps towards combating racism throughout this community.
This is from Sarah Basu Chowdhury. My name is Sarah, and I go to Rockbridge County High School. I've lived in Lexington my entire life. I just wanted to reiterate that many residents of Lexington, including myself, thank you for renaming the cemetery and supporting anti-racism in our home. Thank you, Sarah.
Dear city council members, my name is Oshani Basu Shahari. I was born in Lexington, I grew up here, and I reside here currently. I want to thank you all again for remaining steadfast in the face of ignorance. The cemetery, a symbol of our community, should not have a name that represents slavery and racial injustice. It gives me hope to know that my local government recognizes the importance of renaming remnants of the Confederacy. As a Lexington resident and a person, and as a person of color, I am incredibly grateful to you all for approaching this matter with thoughtfulness, thoroughness, and respect for all racial minorities in this town. Thank you, Oshani.
Hello, my name is Arden Courtney Collins. I've lived in Lexington my entire life. I would like to express my continued support for the renaming of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. I've heard that the city council is facing a lot of backlash for the decision to change the name, but it is my understanding that the majority of city residents want the name changed. The fact that the city owns a public cemetery named for a slave-owning racist should have been changed long ago, but I'm glad this, along with other related issues in our community, are finally being talked about and hopefully addressed. Taking down tributes to Lexington's Confederate past makes room for a better future, and that's the kind of positive change that city residents want to see. Lastly, would you, would like to encourage the city council to see this as a first step and to continue working towards making Lexington a more inclusive and anti-racist place in all regards. Thank you for your time, Arden Courtney Collins.
Hello. I have heard that there has been some backlash to the decision to remove the name of Stonewall Jackson from the downtown cemetery. I would like to thank city council for their decision and add my name to the many city residents who see this change as progress. to the many city residents who see this change as progress. I am excited for the city of Lexington to take this first step in creating a more equitable community. Thank you for your time, Anne Courtney, Lexington.
Lexington City Council, Lexington, Virginia. As tonight is the planned meeting to discuss name changes for the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery, I wish to cast my vote as no. I was born in the original hospital, Jackson's Home, in 1953 and have lived my entire life in Lexington, Virginia. My mother and maternal grandparents, as well as grandparents going back generations, have lived in Lexington, Buena Vista, and Rockbridge County, Virginia. A majority of my relatives are buried in the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Great aunts, great uncles, grandparents, great-grandparents, and great-great-grandparents all have special places and family plots in the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It greatly saddens me to understand through the local paper that there are many people my age and younger who have felt ashamed or frightened to be reared in a community that has so much historical presence. That presence isn't due to the Civil War. In fact, it's all pre-Civil War and post-Civil War. Second Lieutenant Thomas Jonathan Jackson was a professor at the Virginia Military Institute long before there was a Civil War, and his wartime fame occurred during the Mexican-American War, 1846-1848, attaining him the promotion to major. General Robert Edward Lee became president of Washington College after the Civil War, and at a time that our country was in great strife. Mr. Lee intended and successfully did bring these many young men together to be educated at the small college known only as Washington College. His plan was to heal this country and bring it back together. To say that this area or the people of this area revere in worship Jackson and Lee is ridiculous. Those of us who know this area to be our home are proud of our history as a county of Virginia. We are proud that we have esteemed educational institutions in our community. We are knowledgeable that there is one former Civil War officer who chose to stand with his mother, State Virginia, and who became the president of Washington College and developed a curriculum of English, mathematics, languages Greek and Latin, sciences, astronomy, philosophy, and ethics. The fact that Major Jackson was a professor at the Virginia Military Institute was a fact. The Civil War has not occurred, the Civil War had not occurred, and when it did, as a military officer, Jackson obeyed the call to arms. Jackson's burial in Lexington was because of the beauty he found and saw in the area, in this area. It has nothing to do with anything involving the Civil War. I urge you, members of the Lexington City Council, leave the name of our cemetery as it is, Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It is historic, it is well-known and well-appreciated by those of us with family interred there, but also of those tourists who come to Lexington to see and learn the history of our area. Respectfully, Blair Martin Williams.
Marilyn, and that concludes the list of letters that we received prior to 5:00 today. And I'll check with Bonnie in just a moment on if there's anyone else that has zoomed in or seeking to speak to council this evening. I do want to remind everyone that the, in essence, the lineup of the letters, we take them as we receive them. So some of them may have even come in before our last meeting, but after the 5:00 cutoff. So the order, the letters are read in order that they are received either on email or by mail because we do encourage people, again during this virtual meeting time, to feel free to stop by City Hall to deliver, use snail mail or email to communicate with us as we want to learn what everyone in our community has to say and have input with us because we think that's of most importance. Bonnie, is there anybody else that was to speak this evening?
No, there is nobody else lined up to speak.
Terrific. Before we conclude this piece, I'll just say that I thank all the folks that wrote in, and thank you Dawn Johnson for joining us on Zoom and sharing your opinions and insights. Also, thank you for your passion for our community. I can't speak for everyone, but I can certainly speak for myself loudly that I much prefer and look forward to when we can meet again in person and meet safely. I hope that will be much sooner than later. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and the first item is the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery name change. And I asked Dennis to share some statistical information and perhaps a bit of a recap from our meeting, and then a discussion that council would like to have. Dennis?
Thank you, Frank. First off, the online survey that we conducted was live from July 7th through midnight July 26th, and in that time period, the survey received 1,705 submissions. Now, some of these submissions contain more than one name suggestion, but I counted 303 serious suggestions for renaming the cemetery. The remaining 1,400 responses were either jokes or insults, or sometimes both, like "We're Libtard Cemetery" or "Dead People That Vote Democrat Cemetery", or my personal favorite, "City Council Rotten Hell Gardens." But then, full disclosure, the, over 1,000 entries were requests to keep the name Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery, and I think that needs to be clear. But there are a couple of things to point out about the survey and how it worked. First off, there was nothing to stop individuals from submitting more than one response to the survey. And second, even though we asked people to indicate where they live, whether they live within city limits or in Rockbridge County or in Virginia, that was entirely voluntary, and in fact, there's a lot of people who said they lived in Lexington, but the survey also recorded IP addresses, and in a lot of cases, those people weren't in Lexington. So that is something to keep in mind with the results.
Just a question for clarity for the people listening, what does IP address stand for?
Your Internet Protocol Address. If you're using the Internet, every, every request, everything that you do has an IP address associated with it, and that's tied to a locality. So you can, you can look at that IP address and look it up, and it'll tell you whether it's Galveston, Texas, or Lexington, Virginia, or et cetera, et cetera. So short of looking up all IP addresses for those 1,705 submissions, there's no way for sure to identify which ones of these were from Lexington city limits and which ones were from somewhere else in the world. One thing I would say about the data we received, there's nothing in that data that I would see any problem providing to people, except for one item. We did, we did ask people if they wanted to, to include their email addresses, and some people did that. And I don't think if we were to provide this data, the raw data to people, I think that part would have to be redacted. But the rest of it, if somebody really wants to see it, I don't see why we couldn't provide that to them. Just a short recap about our work session last Thursday. City Council worked to kind of narrow that universe of names that we were considering down to four, and they have been publicized in the papers and online. Lexington Memorial Cemetery, Main Street Cemetery of Lexington, Unity Cemetery of Lexington, and Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington. And also during the work session, we discussed the idea of possibly modifying Evergreen Cemetery's name to Evergreen Cemetery of Lexington to bring it more into parity and to point out that the city has two fine cemeteries, and each deserves to be recognized as Lexington cemeteries. I'm wondering if it may be worthwhile this evening if, if each of us, or four of us, basically offered a rationale for each of the names, and would that, would that be a worthwhile venture?
I'm not sure what you're.
Well, what I'm saying is that perhaps David could walk the public through why Main Street Cemetery might be an appropriate name for the cemetery. Chuck might mention why Lexington Memorial Cemetery might be appropriate. Is that something worthwhile or not?
Members of council have an opinion? I don't think it hurts to share those, the thought behind those four names. We want to take time and do that. Does anyone have an objection to doing that?
Okay, does anybody want to volunteer to take on one of them?
Well, just, I'll summarize my thoughts as to Main Street Cemetery of Lexington or Main Street Cemetery. I mean, it's nothing, you know, earth-shattering, except that it identifies the location. And a lot of cemeteries are, have a name for a, for their natural features or geographic location. And Main Street Cemetery of Lexington just summarizes its location within our great city. And so that's simply my rationale, the way I'm thinking about it, but anyone else can chime in as to maybe how they, how they see that, that name.
I'll do Oak Grove if you want. That, that area before it was a cemetery was in Oak Grove, and was referred to that in some newspaper articles. It also meshes nicely with Evergreen as that living quality that relating to nature. And whether you call it Oak Grove of Lexington or just Oak Grove and Evergreen, I think it, it fits well.
I think also might be worth pointing out that the Presbyterian congregation, before they built the church, the original church beside the cemetery, they met in the summers in an Oak Grove, another reason.
I guess in the paper I was quoted as supporting the Lexington, some iteration of Lexington Cemetery, whether it's Lexington Memorial Cemetery or Lexington Cemetery. I don't know if it was formally named Lexington Cemetery before the Presbyterian Church suggested the name of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery when they sold it to the city. But I guess if, you know, to some extent, if we're remembering history, reverting back to the Lexington Cemetery and not including the Presbyterian Church for obvious church and state reasons, I could support. After having a couple of weeks to think about it, I'm, I like Oak Grove too, but it also has some history to it. As Dennis pointed out, the Presbyterian congregation met in the Oak Grove, and there's some, some complicated history that goes along with that as well. I like, I like the, the nature and the feel of, of Oak Grove and its balance with, with Evergreen. But maybe for a, you know, a government entity park or cemetery, Lexington Cemetery might, might be a better choice. And if, I'll, I'll stop there, we can talk about Evergreen maybe later on.
I can, I can talk about, I guess, Unity. That was Unity Cemetery was one of the names mentioned on the first survey. And I just threw that out there as something that you might want to consider. Thinking more of a forward, hopeful, just the themes that we're hoping to accomplish for the new name. But honestly, I think any of those names that we brought forward, the four names, are all, for various reasons, are appropriate. After putting up the four names, Oak Grove, I think when, once people heard about it in the historical context, that seems to have gotten a lot of positive feedback. So just wanted to bring that up.
I do think Oak Grove, it's less related to the church than the fact that it was an Oak Grove in that area.
Can we take a moment to talk about the process? My understanding is we're not, we're not, we're not voting on any of these names tonight. We're doing that at our next City Council meeting, correct?
That's certainly.
The one that we bring forward for ordinance in September.
Yeah, so, so I guess citizens have from now until the next City Council meeting to let us know if there's one of these names or another that they're particularly like. So we hope to hear from the public on, on those. And yeah, so I hope to hear from you.
And if I may, you know, one of the challenges recently, public comment has been going to the clerk of counsel, and then we, we get those comments on kind of a regular basis, but not instantaneously. And so in the last 14 days, one citizen has emailed me. They weren't even from Lexington, and one person has called me. So, you know, I was, I've been kind of surprised. My contact information is online, and one person that I think lives in Texas contacted me with, with some thoughtful thoughts about the cemetery, if you will, but no one from Lexington except one phone call. So for those folks that live in the city, please feel free to reach out to me directly, since it hasn't been occurring.
I guess related to the, to the, to the names that we're considering, Oak Grove Cemetery of, of Lexington, I think @got inserted there at some point or in some discussions, but I think of adds more, a greater feeling of, of community and, and, and place instead of the @Lexington, which it seems like more of a dot on a map. So in light of that, when we're considering the input we get of Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington or Main Street Cemetery of Lexington or Unity Cemetery of Lexington or Lexington Cemetery, which includes Lexington as, as the administrator. I'd like, I would like to hear feedback from the public on the addition of, of Lexington to Evergreen Cemetery. So I'd like to hear the, the, the feedback of changing the name of Evergreen Cemetery to Evergreen Cemetery of Lexington. I think it, considering what we're, what was moving forward with Stonewall Jackson Cemetery, it adds some inclusion in, in the process, and it, I think, will help even maybe elevate Evergreen to a level where it'll get more concentration of, of awareness.
And to add to that, Chuck, I think the Black community has often been thought of very respectfully in many ways to lift up the Black community and to, to make sure that people are treated fairly and equally. But one thing sometimes that goes missing is to ask people what they want, how they feel. And that modification of the Evergreen name was simply part of a discussion. The one thing just kind of led to another, not that there, there was an intention to, to rename it. It just happened as part of the discussion of adding of Lexington to, to the other cemetery. So before that discussion goes further, I think it is important to somehow get feedback from anybody in the community about adding of Lexington to Evergreen. Not that the name Evergreen would change, it's just a modification to add of Lexington because of the discussion of what the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery could possibly become something of Lexington as well. So if we are going to ask for more feedback from the community, that's. that's one thing we need to ask how people feel about adding those two words to Evergreen.
Exactly.
And just to recap what Dennis was pointing out, the ambition tonight and through September 3rd is for the name change of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery to be on the agenda. It was July 2nd when council voted unanimously to change the name, but it won't in fact change until an ordinance is adopted. And from a timing standpoint, council can take all the time that they wish to come up with the new name. But the expectation you all had laid out was that at our August 20th meeting, council would select a name for the cemetery and it would be considered in a new ordinance crafted by the city attorney for adoption or consideration rather at our September 3rd meeting. So anything else to bring up or discuss on the cemetery this evening, cemetery name change rather? Very good, hearing none. Look for a report in consideration of regional jail use of cares fund. Jim, if you'd like to speak to this issue. Jim, are you going to speak to this or Jake?
I'm sorry, sir, I was muted, but I was going to ask, isn't the boards and commissions report prior to this?
No, sir.
No, okay.
I've got this under unfinished business.
Okay. My apologies, misread. As you all know, we have a put some COVID funds aside for the Rockbridge Regional Jail. However, the jail, it has been determined, has been charging all three local entities through their monthly per diem for the expenditures that were spent in the jail on COVID. So the three finance directors of Rockbridge County, City of Lexington and City of Univesta, met with the finance director of the jail and determined that this has been occurring. And the easiest way or the recommended way to rectify this is just to have each entity use their COVID funds to now pay for the jail in the amount that we originally paid in our per diem each month. The share of that for Lexington is $8,500. And if council would approve that expense, that expense will come out of our general fund. And then we it will be replaced by the COVID funds that we have through phase one. And that is our recommendation.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, I'd ask for your consideration.
I move that we approve the use of $8,500 of cares funds by the Rockbridge Regional Jail.
Second.
Thank you, Dennis, for the first, second by Chuck. A roll call vote, Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
Vigler.
Hi.
Strong.
Hi.
Pence.
Hi.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you all very much. Next item, also from city manager, the VDOT site update. Looking for some response to the questions that were posed in our work session previously. Jim, if you could address those or the the VDOT.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, certainly will. You will all remember that our July 16th meeting work session, there were a number of questions that came up about the VDOT site, and some of those could not be answered that evening. So staff was asked to look at the history of that site and the utilities that were available and the concerns that were associated with it to see if some of those questions could be answered. So I hate to go through them verbatim, but I will do so so that everyone can hear that. One of the questions was how many houses and businesses are in the sewer shed? That part of the city that uses the Sarah's Run Interceptor. And there are 570 residential equivalent units in the city and 13 in Rockbridge County, according to the Sarah's Run study. And we do not have any means of differentiating between those that are businesses and those that are solely residential. What is the age and condition of the?
I'm sorry, Jim, quick question on that?
Yes.
Or do you want to go through all of them and we'll go back to?
No, that's fine.
All right. Houses and businesses in the sewer shed and says 13 in Rockbridge County. If if I'm wrong, then then strike this, but is Birdfield included?
I don't.
Sarah's Run Sewer Shed, and so there's there's more than 13 houses out there. That's why I asked.
I asked that question specifically to Jeff Martone, and there are only 13 in the in the system. I cannot tell you exactly what neighborhood or street they're on. But I did ask, I assumed there were more, he said no.
Okay, thank you.
So the second question is, what is the age and condition of the Sarah's Run Interceptor? The interceptor that flows from the from the smaller watersheds within the city and likely Jackson Avenue section is the oldest, about 100 years old. The interceptor itself was extended into the areas that had been Rockbridge County after the annexations in the 1960s. So the outer portion of the interceptor is now 60 years old. The inner portion near Jackson Avenue was over 100 years old. Questions? Okay. If the current prioritized CIP projects for replacement are based upon age, how does Sarah's Run rank compared to these projects? Assorted interceptor repairs and lining efforts have occurred over the years on the Sarah's Run Interceptor. Other than noted SAGs, SAGs in the interceptor where over the years it has settled and then, you know, it fills with water in that pipe. The interceptor itself is in relatively good shape. The issue is the interceptor is at capacity due to size, not condition. During significant wet weather events, this inadequacy is attributed to the amount of infiltration and inflow coming from the assorted sewer sheds or watersheds entering the interceptor. If we can wait 20 to 30 years, we can solve the capacity issue through neighborhood rebuilds or lining efforts. If we need to develop and serve the VDOT property sooner than later, a replacement of the interceptor is recommended now. So, you know, ultimately, we could take the route of going through all those side streets that drain into the interceptor and fixing those or relining those. But it would be an expensive proposition and take many years. Questions? Should we check with Tim Davy with the Timmons Group to see if the potential expense investment for the interceptor would change his recommendation from housing to some other use that would create less flow? The multifamily housing study is where the emphasis on multifamily housing developed. It was not a recommendation from Tim Davy. The study indicated the site was well poised for development of multifamily housing. And this concept developed from discussions between Tim Davy, Noah Simon, and other stakeholders and interested parties. At this time, we do not have enough detailed information to ask Mr. Davy to make a recommendation. Further, the interceptor is over capacity as is. Any use of the site or other increased uses in the area just increases this problem. Any questions? Will the condition and capacity issues with the interceptor decrease the value of the VDOT site? No, the appraisals are developed with the understanding that water and sewer are available at the site. Sewer is available, just note, just not enough for 150 to 200 housing units. Further, we are limited to the language adopted in the state budget that spelled out the method of assessing the value of the property. Should we put in place a policy or moratorium to prevent development or expansion of businesses in the area? No, the current study is conservative, and we could get more capacity by bolting down manhole covers should be desired. A comment was made that we should reach out to partners and interested parties to inform them and share this information with them. A copy of this report has been sent to Rockbridge County and the Rockbridge PSA. And of course, we hope the public is informed by the debate and discussion going on, public in general. Is there any unmetered water use in the sewer shed that would contribute to the extra flow that has been that has been attributed to INI? And that is not to the staff's knowledge. We don't believe there's any unmetered water customers or significant unmetered water flow in that area. If we pass a stormwater fee and made improvements to the stormwater system, would it remove INI from the interceptor? Again, likely not, according to staff. We have no city-owned cross connections between the stormwater and sanitary sewer system. Of course, rainwater from private property properties entering the system is another question. We can determine more more after the results of the smoke testing is analyzed. A stormwater fee would only help if we found cross connections or badly damaged pipes in the public system. Because we would not use that fee on fixing private problems. If we aggressively pursued repairs of the INI issue in the sewer shed, could we free up enough capacity to serve the VDOT site? And how long would it take? Yes, we could serve the site and we could free up capacity, but that's provided we can allocate the significant funds required and could wait a decade or more for that to occur. Because we could not improve all those sewer sheds in a short period of time. What is the best investment, interceptor upgrade or INI repairs? While infiltration hits the city finances every day, rainwater intrusion repairs would yield the most additional capacity and return on investment. Over time, the removal of an INI would yield the best overall return on investment. However, the interceptor replacement accomplishes the goal of permitting development of the VDOT site and other sites in the area within a near term timeframe. What is the cost of bolting down manholes and installing backflow preventers? The estimated cost would be $1,000 per manhole and $450 per backflow preventer. Without a complete study, an estimated 13 manholes would need to be dealt with, 30 backflow preventers installed. This is a total of $26,500, but is a very rough estimate without a physical survey and review, i.e. what homes have basements, et cetera, where you require a backflow preventer. And those were the questions that staff heard coming from that meeting on July 16th, the work session. If we miss some, we certainly accept them today or else at another location or I should say time from city council, but those were the ones that we did hear at that time that evening. So are there any further questions by council?
Jim, one question, when you talk about the backflow preventers, is that singularly that those are our lines? At the same time, it'd be prudent for homeowners to have a backflow preventer as well.
Well, no, sir, the those those backflow preventers in that case were to serve homeowners' lines. When we knew or believed that the additional water pressure that would be put in the interceptor because of the manhole covers would start pushing water, if you will, uphill into basements or into residents and businesses, then we would put on a backflow preventer to prevent that.
And how many did you say the word that would?
Well, without a study, we thought there was at least 30 backflow preventers required just from elevations of the buildings compared to elevation of the interceptor itself.
Certainly, we have certainly a best guess.
Absolutely. We would do a lot more work on the ground before we would make that kind of a recommendation or improvement, because we certainly don't want to damage anybody's property.
Right, I was thinking that with the number of 570 residents in 13 Rockbridge County, you're looking at 600 or 583 backflow preventers potentially, but.
Well, most of those are well above hill, uphill, I should say, and above the grade of the interceptor. I didn't ask the public works director, Jeff Martone, specifically, but the interceptor itself, if manholes were put on, would not raise the level of the water probably much more than six to 10 feet. So only those nearby would be threatened.
Got you.
And and that concept includes the city paying for those backflow preventers for residents? Because I do recall a few years ago, there was a big push within the city that we all needed backflow preventers. And of course, every resident had to pay for it themselves. And because we had we had that occurring and some people were having damage and it was kind of a push within the city that everyone had to get one at their at their expense. So just to clarify that, there could be a lot of people already with backflow preventers. So all that a few years ago.
We're talking sewer lines, not water lines. The other previously was done on the water.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for correcting me, Leslie, yeah.
I was gonna say, not being here at that time, I'm not familiar with that discussion. But of course, if the city is if the city is putting in place the the manhole covers that would cause that reaction or cause that change in the sewers, then we should be responsible for those backflow preventers to protect the residents. At least in my estimation and recommendation.
Thank you, Jim, any questions from council?
I just wanted to add that I think we spent about $2 million to do the backflow preventers on the water lines some years ago. And it was a mess.
Infrastructure is not not easy business. I'm reminded of the words of Winston Churchill. A pessimist sees the difficulty in every opportunity, and an optimist sees the opportunity in every difficulty. And certainly with the issues that you've outlined, we have an abundance of opportunity in my optimistic eyes. And I encourage council to remain optimistic on providing good service for our citizens. Next item on the agenda is boards and commissions.
Was that all, sorry, I didn't realize that was all the discussion we were gonna have on that. Is that now we're there? I know we're gonna talk in closed session about purchase of the property. But but I guess one question I have, we've talked about this property in respect to developing it for multifamily housing. We could still could do less water sewer intensive project, retail, that kind of thing, without having to make really any upgrades to the to the system on this piece of property. Is that true?
We we could certainly do some of those improvements. We'd have to carefully look at the specific businesses and and do a calculation of the usage of of the water and then subsequent sewer that would flow out, because we aren't very close to capacity. And even though the study is conservative, we don't know how much capacity we have. And we can currently say that during heavy rainwater events, we're already at the top of the manhole covers. Or very near. So any additional flow could put us over that limit. And we just have to take take that into consequence.
I guess, looking at at the possible recommendations, so I guess to get a more firm answer on that. Because like if you do retail, that is typically low, low flow. You wouldn't have much. Are you saying that we have to do something to this interceptor line regardless? Because that's not what I read exactly in the.
I would not say regardless, but I think there are two points. One is, when you say retail, can we limit it to retail as opposed to restaurants or to health clubs? You know, if we zone it for certain things, I'm not sure legally we could or practically limit it to just shopping retail. We have very little usage, as you say. The other aspect of it is, of course, if we put in those types of uses as opposed to residential and high water usage businesses, and we had some difficulties, we could do as suggested and put a temporary fix in place to bolt down the manhole covers and put in backflow protectors and assure ourselves that in most instances, we did not have a problem. Should should a problem develop? And again, we can't tell you if a problem will develop until we know more about the water usage on that site with any of those types of businesses.
Yes, Leslie's question is related to the question I asked at the last meeting on this. It's like, how much extra capacity can Sarah's Run Interceptor handle? And from what I read in the report is it can't handle any. And now I'm sort of getting a different answer. I I'm looking for some guidance on, yes, it can handle a little, yes, it can handle a lot. Or I guess I need. Or I guess I need some sort of quantification on what extra load the interceptor can handle. And maybe that's something Jeff can provide.
I'll certainly ask that question again. My belief is the study itself, for a variety of reasons, could not be conclusive enough to give us how much capacity is left. Because it depends largely upon the rainfall that we receive. At certain times, there's none. At other times, there is fair amount of capacity. Do we want to take a chance that the next big rainfall event doesn't create a problem? Because we don't know that it won't. And that's my my belief. Now, again, I'll ask Jeff, see if we can talk to the folks who did the study and and provide something more conclusive as to actual gallons or capacity in the line.
Yeah, that's Maybe there's, you know, using, I'm sorry I'm getting in the weeds on this, but you know, is there, you know, how much extra rainfall could the system handle before we have a serious problem versus something like today or the last few days where you have a thunderstorm come through and it drops a half an inch or so? And and it's almost a not event compared to two falls ago when we were pumping leachate out of the of the landfill, because it was risk of overflow.
I'll ask to see what we can get that's more more conclusive.
I think it obviously this is an ongoing and significant and expensive topic. For tonight's purposes and our work session previously, Jeff, the engineer, was not here. So I think, Jim, I would ask, I think council's asking, we'd like to hear from the professionals, some firmer details. And perhaps with another work session as we contemplate and discuss the progress on the potential V dot acquisition. Is is the way to go, because we just don't have the resources here tonight to get in the weeds, as Chuck's indicated. And and really look at some of those details of what some viable options are.
And I think it's still important to point out that that is our one of our main entrance corridors. And so things can be done there regardless if even if it's not multifamily housing. And we do have another five acre property on Spotswood Drive that could potentially be multifamily housing. And we need to look at the water and sewer on on that property to see if it could support something. So maybe it's, you know, we keep all these ideas that have been brought up and, you know, we have the data saying we need additional housing. We may still be able to do it. So I'm with you, Frank. I'm an optimist. I think we can do something good in that area. May not be what we were originally talking about, but we have, we have options.
Absolutely. Thank you, Leslie. Any other council members, anything else on V dot? Jim, thanks for bringing forward those answers to those questions and look forward to embracing it optimistically and making some great opportunities for housing and other commercial opportunities in our community.
Thank you, sir.
Under boards and commissions, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Main Street Lexington.
Yes, we had a online retreat today. And just to give you, at the retreat today, we talked about our different boards and how we can boost membership on those boards. Get continue getting new blood within the organization and what, again, idea of what efforts we want to make this year. And even in this strange time, so far, we haven't canceled any events. We've done things a little differently, such as the Fourth of July Bike Parade and the next one coming up. Well, I take that back, we just had Restaurant Week as well. That that went on, even though most of the advertising was done online for that. We have the students coming in town in August at the end of the month. And we'll still do the Get Downtown event, except it'll be all virtual this year. We're asking the merchants to make online videos to advertise their stores. And we'll target getting that information out to to the students. And they're already planning on what they can do for Halloween to still have some kind of celebration, but a safe one. So that too will look different. And as you know, through the from the CARES report, that the city through the IDA had 100, close to $127,000 for that Main Street was giving out to businesses based on need. And they had 51 applications throughout the city of Lexington. And they gave out all the funds in increments between $500 to 5,000. So all 51 applicants received some funds. We did hear from one business owner that by getting those funds, his July net operations were comparable to last year's only by having that those additional funds. So these funds are making a difference. They are a lifeline for our businesses. And they very much appreciate everything that that the community is doing to support them. And we'd and throughout all this, we've, you know, there's lots of change going on downtown. And we even have some new businesses opening up. There's Mulberry D Y I on South Main Street. It's a craft maker space type operation. There's something going in where Ladies Habit was, a vegetarian restaurant going in where Mono Taqueria is. So look for the new businesses downtown. Still lots of exciting things going on. And Lexington was one of two cities in Virginia chosen by the Garden Club of Virginia. It was it was Lexington and Gloucester, and they'd like to make a video of the civic projects we've been doing. So we're being recognized for the downtown beautification projects. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Leslie? Leslie, I in exploring and trying to understand exactly how the business grants went. Understand that staff and volunteers went around to all the businesses in town on Nelson Street, as well as South Main Street, inviting them to apply for the grant. So I think it's important to understand that Main Street Lexington, its primary focus is downtown Lexington, doesn't limit their support and invite people all over the community to to join the organization if they want to do their part to uplift Lexington.
Right. And we've had some nice synergies lately with some Buena Vista representation and in Glasgow representation. And so we can do more partnerships and just find out what with share ideas between communities. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. It's not just downtown.
Thank you. Thank you. Planning Commission.
We met last Thursday and we're continuing work on the comprehensive plan. And we're getting down to the details and we plan to have a public hearing on the final draft of the comprehensive plan in our first meeting in September. So hopefully council will see that shortly after that.
Terrific. Thank you. And all Planning Commission for your detailed and thoughtful work on the plan. Regional Tourism Board.
Yeah, the Regional Tourism Board won't meet again until Wednesday, August 19th. But I did want to mention that tomorrow Tourism Director Gene Clark and I will meet with Rockbridge Historical Society's Eric Wilson and Dr. Sasha Galiboff, who is the Chair of Washington Lee's Anthropology and Sociology Department and the Director of the University's Community-Based Learning Office. And we'll be brainstorming how we might utilize some of the display space at the Lexington Visitor Center to house a few historical exhibits created by Washington Lee Anthropology students. The focus for this project would be on highlighting Black history and culture in the Rockbridge area. And I hope to have some more details on this project at our next city council meeting.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions? Rockbridge Area Department of Social Services, Michelle.
I have no report.
Thank you, ma'am. Raro, Mr. Ziegler.
We rescheduled our normal meeting from yesterday to next Wednesday, but I will report one thing. If you happen to be in Buena Vista, a new scoreboard is at Camden Field. It's been a project that's been been that we've been wanting to check off for a while and we've finally done it. So through donations from Modine and then also through the Pickrell Fund, we are able to put a new scoreboard at Camden Field. And so when we are able to play football again, that's going to really enhance that that field for the kids and the fans. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Yes, threshold met on the 21st of July. And the first item on the agenda was an election. Happy to report that Fred Kirschner has continued as president. And Crystal Lee Bozo is the new Vice President. We continued discussion about the projects that have been ongoing, that COVID has curtailed all of those. When COVID went into effect, we had one project that was about three fourths complete. Another project completed. And a third project was actually an emergency sewer issue that we've all heard about, I think. And we were able to receive a grant by way of the Health Department to assist a resident with 100% of the cost of the project. This project was in regard to a faulty sewer on the outside. And it not only affected the resident, but of course, those who live nearby. So many thanks to Jeff Martone and staff at Public Works for their coordination with Arnie Glazer and staff in City Hall. We also discussed a call to action, which is a group that has met to discuss the various projects going on in the community that have to do with improvements in housing, improvements in things that Dennis was just talking about to have recognition of accomplishments of the Black community. So we needed to find out whether Threshold could play a role in this project. And because the people who wanted to find out about what the needs are in the community, had questions about housing. So they needed to know the what role Threshold could play in regard to housing needs. So we were able to showcase what Threshold has done and what Threshold intends to continue doing. And make sure that we make it known that we're available to discuss any housing ideas that they have to include the city in lifting up our housing needs. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. CARES Committee, I don't think there's anything to report, but do ask you to stand ready to meet when the city manager solicits for review of the next wave of care funds that are coming our way. Maybe some modifications and things for you all to evaluate of how the first wave went and ways to best serve our community with those dollars in the next wave. So under my report, we have Dick Halsit, who's been serving on the IDA. His term is set to expire May 1st, 2023. Dick tendered his resignation effective July 31st. We have an application from William Bill King to fill that unexpired term of Dick's, again, expiring May 1st of 2023. And I'd welcome your consideration for his appointment.
Move to a point, Bill King to the unexpired term held by Dick Halsit on the IDA.
Second.
And for clarification, term to expire May 1st of 2023. Have a motion, second and discussion.
Just please thank Dick Halsit for his his service on the IDA.
Certainly. He's served faithfully on that and many other committees and boards around our city. So we're we're thankful for the time that he's contributed. Roll call vote, Ms. Strawn.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Miss Hens.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously, and we look forward to Bill King's contributions to the IDA. I made some comments earlier, let let those stand, and I will call in the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, the governor held a briefing on COVID and he reported that case numbers are holding steady in the state. And that's still very positive, because in many states, the cases are going up at this time. On a very positive note, a rapid testing procedure has been developed. This antigen test provides results in 20 minutes or less. The governor indicated the state will purchase 500,000 of these tests initially. They will not, however, be provided for general use at this time, but only for populations with higher risks and with specific requirements for using the test. Should more tests be required, the state will look at means to purchase more. This is great news, obviously, for many people who understand that many times that they're waiting five, six, even 10 days for results. And with the 20 minute test result, action can be taken immediately to quarantine or to determine that there's no need for a quarantine. So it's something I had not heard of, I was not aware of, and it's very positive. The Rockbridge Coral Society has determined a unique means of continuing their activities in the face of COVID. They have reserved the pavilion in Jordan Point Park for eight sessions from August 5th through October 27th to continue their musical activities. And so perhaps we should all rot by, practice social distancing and enjoy the glad sounds on one of those nights. Elections impacts or COVID impacts elections, just like everything else. Beginning September 18th through November 3rd, in-person absentee voting will be held in the City Hall Community Room. Of course, most meetings and uses of the room were canceled due to COVID. However, other uses that are still there will either be moved upstairs to the second floor conference room or to other areas. And this gives, of course, the voting process important safer environment with more room in a separate location and access away from other city hall offices and entries. And congratulations should be given to our registrar, Jan Yall, and the Board of Elections for their wisdom and leadership in working diligently to safeguard our voting privileges. The Department of Labor Industry has put in a number of requirements, as I previously noted. And one of those that is now being required is that stringent cleaning of our workspaces must occur on a daily basis. This includes cleaning of our floors and surfaces in City Hall and other workplaces. Because of that, we've negotiated an extension, negotiated an extension with our building maintenance company to extend these services at the Police Department, DPW, and City Hall for an additional $3,000 per month. Of course, we will pay for this additional cleaning with CARES funds through the end of the year or until funds are exhausted. However, we must also consider that these requirements from the Department of Labor and Industry may extend well past the first of 2021. So even though the CARES funds have to be used up by the end of the year, we cannot tell at this point in time how long those standards will be with us. And so we may have to evaluate this expense of $3,000 a month well into calendar year 2021. Regarding the uses of CARES funds, the current balance for Phase 1 is now down to about $8,250. So we've used that money extensively for a lot of uses. And as Councilmember Strawn has said, Main Street Lexington and other organizations and individual businesses have been very pleased with those uses in the community. I've heard a number of comments about the uses in City Hall and our other facilities where we have touchless faucets, touchless towel dispensers, touchless door openers, so that people don't have to worry about what they're picking up, perhaps in City Hall or the Police Department or Public Works. Now, the other good news is that we will get additional CARES funds in Phase 2. The governor announced this recently. And we, along with every city and county in the state, will basically receive another allocation that is equal to the allocation we received in Phase 1. For the city, that's just less than $650,000. The funds also must be used for the rig of initial requirements from the federal government. So we have to use those by the end of this calendar year or have them under contract. So we have to use those by the end of this calendar year or have them under contract. There was a little bit of leeway given. So if we have a particular need and we can get it under contract and we're required to pay that, I think we have up to 90 days after the end of the year to pay that expense and still be acceptable under the requirements of the federal government. I would like, as the mayor anticipated, to recommend and encourage that we once again put in place a small committee of council members, city staff, and perhaps some of our partners who aided us in the first round of distributing the CARES funds. And I'm thinking of Main Street Lexington again, and the Community Foundation, who helped get those funds out to community organizations and to businesses. So I'd ask the council to discuss that and consider that at some point in time, please. And earlier today, I sat on the business call with Main, excuse me, with counties and cities up and down the Shenandoah Valley as to how they would use these funds. And just as an item of interest, Rockbridge County received $1.9 million CARES funds. Now, our neighbors to the north, Rockingham, has $13.5 million allocated. And Augusta County has $14.00 million, times two. Because those allocations were repeated for the first phase and second phase. So some of those individual counties are sitting on a lot of money and have some difficulty figuring out how to spend those dollars. I'd love to have that problem. Comprehensive Plan Update. The Planning Commission, as Councilmember Ayers indicated, excuse me, Strawn indicated, continues to work hard and diligently to finish the plan update. The Planning Director, Arnie Glazer, has also been asked to continue to explore means by which the Planning Commission can effectively coordinate activities and processes with city staff. And this give and take at the end of a long process has been particularly helpful. And the Planning Commission should be congratulated for reaching out in this manner. We had a virtual meeting with a couple of members of the Planning Commission who have reached out to staff and myself about how we could coordinate activities. And we'll be getting back to the Planning Commission with some further information from city staff in the very near future. Also, something that occurred on the negative aspect is that we had a damage to a pump station in the Campbell Lane area. Two pump stations are in that location to pump wastewater, basically uphill in our sewer system. And we filed a claim with the insurance company with the assistance of the Finance Director Jake Adams. And Scott Damron at DPW has done an excellent job of first, working with the Maury Service Authority to make sure we had trucks on standby to pump any of that raw wastewater and deliver it to the treatment plant should we need. And now we've also rented a diesel pump that will be there on a weekly basis until repairs are completed. But those repairs pounding the pump station itself, the standby truck, and the rental of the, of the generators and the pump will be thousands of dollars. And so we're looking at where to find that money in the budget. Lexington Fire Department, Kai Dickerson, the chief there, finds a lot of ways to keep the fire department and his folks active in the community. They have finished recertifying all the Lexington Police Department personnel in CPR, which is very important, and that's part of the training the fire department provides. And they've also, as a, as a side, then given some exercise equipment as a donation from WNL. So they're keeping in better shape because of the, the activities of WNL and providing that, that equipment to, to the department. Street resurfacing update, and I must say, I'm disappointed to report that the street restriping to go along with the resurfacing is, is still delayed. Unfortunately, the general contractor seems to be having a problem with that particular sub. Communication is, is not forthcoming from that sub as to why they're not able to show up. And I'm very sorry that this is occurring. And we will explore other options under the contract to try and get that work done. And hopefully it'll be approved and completed soon.
Jim, on that, on that note, it might, if it is going to take a little while, especially with families coming in who aren't familiar with the area, with the colleges resuming, that area around White Street, I've seen people driving in the left-hand lane and almost having head-on collisions. So there might be some areas where we need at least put cones out to give people an idea of where the lines would be.
Thank you. We'll take a look at, take a look at that. Thank you. Earlier this week, and our city attorney knows of this very well, we received a request, a Freedom of Information request for information regarding our popular, most popular topic, and that's the renaming of the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. And I'd just like to give you a few instances of what that FOI contains. It requires us to find any and all documents and communications to and from City Council, to and from City Council and City residents, to and from the city manager between City Council and the Architectural Review Board, Cemetery Advisory Board, Virginia Department of Historic Resources, DPW, the Public Works Director, and the Department of Interior. So all communications between Council and those agencies. It further goes on to request documentation of grants and funding received from today through 1949 with City Council. And those communications would be with the Department of Interior, the National Historic Preservation Act, and communications with regard to tax incentives received from the National Historic Landmark designation. It also requires a tourism economic impact statement, any communications regarding that, changes in individual and business tax base, tax base, and all the documents and communications regarding the Perpetual Care Trust Fund, Cemetery Trust Fund, and the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. All related to the trust fund that is all related to the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. The Freedom of Information Act requires a response within five days. And working with the city attorney, a response has been provided because we're not able to provide the information. So our response has been to estimate the time and expense that may be charged for this, for these documents and this work. And while the administrative work may be charged at only $21 per hour according to the act, we can only charge for the lowest paid clerical worker. We can't charge the hourly rate of tourism director or the finance director, et cetera. But this work will require weeks of work from the Finance Director, Department of Public Works, Tourism, City Clerk, IT and City Attorney. These expenses have been estimated to be $6,140, and that's strictly an estimate. And that deposit must be paid before we'll begin the work. And if there's any other questions, I know the city attorney can answer questions on this as well as myself.
Other than, well, I guess the question of obligation of, of expense has been answered. But, and, and the response within five days has, has been addressed. But is, does FOIA indicated a deadline of submitting the requested documents to the person requesting them within a certain timeframe? Is, is there a deadline?
Well, we've, city attorney can answer that better than I, but I know we've asked for an extension. And Jared, could you chime in, please?
Sure. The, there's an initial five-day requirement. And if it's a fairly straightforward response, ideally, you just turn over the, the documents in that five days. But if there, the request is so broad that it's unreasonable or practically impossible, I believe the language is, to give a response within those five days that then trigger, you respond within those five days, we can't do it within five days, then you get an automatic seven-day extension. And that's ultimately the deadline in statute. But there is a provision, if you can't come to an agreement with the requister on a longer deadline, you can petition the Circuit Court for an extension. So I did indicate in our response that if we could not come to an agreement before, well, at this point, we're waiting for a response for the deposit. Or ideally, a more specific request. So at this point, the deadline is told until we hear back from the requister, one way or the other. But if we can't agree on something more reasonable than a seven-day turnaround, we petition the Circuit Court for an extension.
What, I guess that, that leads me to two, two more questions. What's the turnaround at Circuit Court for that petition to be answered and resolved with, with the person requesting FOIA? And two, if the meter running goes past the cost estimate of $6,000 and whatever it was, we, do we stop work and then go back to the, to the FOIA requister and say, this is turning out to be much more complicated than we initially estimated? And we're stopping work, you need to come up with another, how much ever?
On the petitioning the Circuit Court, as you are all well aware, proceedings in Circuit Court can take some time. So that's not explicitly stated in the statute exactly what, you know, there's no advancing it on the docket or sort of an emergency hearing, anything like that. So that is a good question. And in theory, we'd be able to come up with a, a deadline by agreement facing that uncertainty. I did propose, assuming we get a deposit, you know, Monday or Tuesday of next week, that we could turn, have this all turned over. Based on my discussions with staff, we could have all of this turned over, most of this turned over by the end of the month, which I think is, is reasonable. So that's sort of where that stands. That's frankly, a good and open question, what the deadline would be if and when we get to Circuit Court. As far as the cost, I believe, as you would hope, the practical response would be, we all keep track of our time and expense. And when we hit the amount of the deposit, we would go back and say, this is what we have for this amount of money. And we're going to need additional funds to complete your request. The statute does speak in terms of preliminary estimates. And that sort of language indicates to me that as long as you put in what I, and we did, what I think is a reasonable, good faith estimate in requiring a deposit, that it, it's to be expected that the requister will ultimately pay for the balance of the costs. And that's, that's sort of fundamental part of FOIA is that the requister is fundamentally responsible for paying the cost. So I don't think that will be an issue. Now, whether that's sort of a tiered thing where we use up the first estimate, see how much we go after that, or we just go ahead and complete and expect the payment after we're done, we just have to see where we are. But given, and all credit to staff, everyone sort of jumped in very quickly and thoroughly to provide what I think is a reasonable estimate. So I, I think we'd be fairly close to that target.
Understood. Thank you. Didn't anticipate overrunning the, the cost estimate, but was just curious if, you know, you, you open one can of worms and it opens another. Thank you.
And, and so just to clarify, the, the one request, well, there's multiple requests, but it, any communications regarding that cemetery with the public from, let's say, Public Works? So that would mean anyone that has ever been buried there, ever, or inquired about having a funeral there, et cetera, that would mean that communication occurred between Public Works and a member of the public. So anyone that's ever purchased a plot, thought about purchasing a plot, inquired about purchasing a plot, inquired about having a, you know, a funeral there with all the funeral homes and so forth, every bit of their communications about their loved ones would be FOIA? And we, we would turn that over? Is that correct?
Jared could comment, but my belief, Councilmember, is that that communication between Public Works and the public was not mentioned in the FOIA. It was only City Council and the public that was mentioned in the FOIA. Jared, is that correct?
That's correct.
So none of the city agencies in their communication with the public show up in the FOIA require, or request?
Though now we might, should expect a expanded FOIA request after that suggestion.
Well, that's fine. We want to be as transparent as possible. I mean, I think that would mean that the deposit might be double or triple the $6,000. And no one would, would, you know, our, our goal is always to be as transparent as possible and provide the public with as much sunlight on any decision. And, and also, you know, if they, the, the business of our residents and, and their burials or their, you know, thinking about purchasing a plot, if that's of, of interest, then that should be provided per, per FOIA. So that's, that's certainly within anyone's opportunity to, to request.
Yeah, absolutely. No question about that. And that was literally the first line of the email of the response was that city's position on this issue and every issue is, we want to be as transparent as possible and are more than happy to provide all of the requested records. But have to recognize that it is going to take some time and there is going to be a cost associated with that. So I did suggest that perhaps the request could be modified with, and things made more specific would both increase the time that we could provide the records as well as decrease the cost. But if the requister wants to stand on the request as is, we're happy to do that work. But it is going to take some time and, and cost some money to, to go through all these documents. But to your point, you're 100% correct of, I mean, just not even on this issue, any public record, anyone, any Virginia resident can request any public record, and we're obligated to turn it over under these terms.
Is the request itself public record? So the, so the, it is not confidential who the requister is?
Correct.
Jim and Jared, did Jennifer Brown contact either one of you seeking information by phone? My recollection is frequently with FOIA. People make requests because they perhaps called or stopped by and were looking for information and weren't able to obtain it. Or it was, they were told it was classified in some capacity and then presented the city with a, a FOIA. Did Ms. Brown contact either one of you all with any requests prior to the FOIA request?
Personally, I'm not aware or recollect that that was such, that, that was the case. Jared?
No, she did not contact me. The first I heard from her was this FOIA request on Monday.
Very good. Just disappointed that, I'm, I'm not sure what information she's looking for, but glad, glad to provide it. And FOIA is one way to certainly request it. And, but glad, glad to help. And I know staff stands ready to provide any support to any citizen that would like information on our operations.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I do have one other item from our report, and that requires a vote on, from City Council. Tuesday night, I received a letter and a request from Washington Lee. As you are aware, when the students move in, they typically ask that Washington Street be closed between Lee and Nelson. So the students can, students and family can unload their possessions and move into the university. Typically, they are able to do this in one day. But with COVID, they have split the students up to give more social distancing. And they are asking that the street be closed in that section of Washington, August 10th through 19th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I've spoken with the police chief and the WNL security are responsible or have taken responsibility for the safety of that area and coordinating it off from general traffic and done that successfully in the past. So we have no problem from staff in working with WNL and providing that courtesy to them so that they can safely get the students back on campus. And you do need to vote on that, however, in order for us to allow them to close the street.
Jim, just to confirm, so it's the 10th through the 19th?
Yes, sir.
A grand total of, over a May days, that is.
If it includes the 10th, it sounds like it's 10 days.
Very good. And Jared, is it, is it's an issue related to Washington and Lee? Do you see any reason that any council members would conflict of interest?
No, my read, and I did, Frank, speak with Larry about this on this and sort of other issues, is unless the, that the statute on the conflict of interest is very clear that unless the member or someone in the member's immediate household has a direct financial interest in the question, then it is not a conflict of interest legally. But obviously, if anyone on council feels that there is a perception of a conflict or in any way feels that it might be sort of beneficial to recuse themselves out of the discussion, certainly more than capable of doing that.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation from staff to Washington and Lee's request to close the Washington Street from Lee to Nelson, August 10th through August 19th, reopening on August 20th. And ask for your consideration.
I make the motion. You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Leslie, for the motion.
Second that.
Thank you, Michelle, for a second. Any further discussion?
Are there hours associated with that, or is that 24 hours a day for 10 days?
It's 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
8:00 AM. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I just to comment, I have to say, I'm kind of loathe to close Washington Street for that long a period. However, it is for safety's sake, and it's important we get the students back. So on that basis, I would vote for this, but, you know, I mean, this will be an interesting, it'll be an interesting traffic study, if you will, to see how this goes for 10 days, to have that blocked off that way. So I'd be really curious how that works, so.
Very good. There are no other questions or comments? As for roll call vote, Mr. Smith? Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Hents?
Aye.
Ms. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all, and safe move in for the folks at Washington and Lee. Next, anything else, Jim?
Other than the closed session on VDOT, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
I don't have a report per se, but we have reached the point where we need to re-adopt the emergency ordinance allowing us to meet electronically. You'll recall that that needs to be re-adopted every 60 days. So I'd ask for us to go ahead and do that tonight. I will remind everyone that this allows us to meet electronically but does not require it. So if conditions change within the next 60 days, this does not bind us to any action. It merely allows us to meet electronically if we choose to do so. So with that, I would ask for a motion to re-adopt the emergency ordinance to effectuate temporary changes and certain deadlines and to modify public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity of operations associated with pandemic disaster. First pass on April 2nd, 2020.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Chuck, a second?
Second.
And we'll give it to Marilyn. Close call there. And shame on you all for not regurgitating the motion that the city attorney offered up there.
Tried to save time.
Fair enough. It is getting to be a late hour. I have a motion, second and a discussion. Hearing none, with as for roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Hents?
Aye.
Ms. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Before we break into the closed session, I just want to acknowledge and thank all of council for their dedication and commitment to listening to almost two hours, or in this instance, reading almost two hours of public comment and giving folks the opportunity to have their voices heard. And with that, Ms. Alexander, I invite you to take us into closed session.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in closed session in accordance with Section 2.2-3711, subsection A.3, to discuss the acquisition of real property, the VDOT site, for a public purpose because discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. That is a motion. And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Hents?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries to move into closed session.
Can we take a two-minute break?